Landing board for Monday, June 3rd, 2024 at 7:30 PM. Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and that is being conducted in accordance of NJSA 10:4-6 at sec of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Matt.
Presence.
Mr. Napolitano.
Here.
Mr. Shaw.
Here.
Mr. Stenzel.
Here.
Chairman Dinsmore.
Here.
We have our board planner, Mr. Weiser, our board engineer, Mr. Canziano, and our board attorney, Mr. Steinbeck.
All right, if we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'm going to start by announcing that, uh, application number 24:506, 20 to 30, Lanidex Urban Renewal is going to be carried to what date?
Next Monday, June 10th.
All right, this will be your only, if you're here for that case, this will be your only notice that this is going to happen. So that case is going to a special meeting on June 10th. Normally, we would not have a meeting on June 10th, but, uh, it was requested that we have a special meeting, so next Monday, June 10th, we will have that meeting. Now, I have to ask the board for approval of move carrying the, the case. Is there a motion to carry the case to June 10th?
Motion to carry.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Now, are there any questions on this? Because this is your only notice. Yes.
Is the meeting going to be here?
Yes. Yes, the meeting will be here.
So it will not be spoken of at all tonight?
No, there will be nothing. You can go home now if you are only here for that.
Okay, so 7:30, June 10th, here.
7:30, June 10th, here. Yes.
Excuse me?
Yep. Are there any other? Are there any other items that are not on our agenda tonight that anybody of the public, any one of the public wishes to speak to? Or bring to the board's attention? Hearing and seeing none. We will move on to our resolution for application number 22:532, 180 Kingston Road LLC. Uh, who we got here that can vote for it?
Matt, Shaw, Stenzel, and Dinsmore.
Do I hear a motion approving this?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the, uh, to, to approve the resolution for application 23:535. Oh, that's the wrong one, sorry. Oh, this is from last time, I'm sorry.
You're on the list.
Yeah, I know. 22532, 180 Kingston Road LLC.
Yes, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, very good. Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Matt.
Yes.
Shaw.
Yes.
Dinsel.
Yes.
Dinsmore.
Yes. All right, so we have approved that resolution. That brings us to application number 23:534, New Jersey Manufacturers Insurance Company, One Sylvan Way, Block 302, Lot 4.1, minor site plan with C variance relief to install a generator. I'm assuming you didn't bring your mask.
Good evening.
Come on.
Good evening, uh, my name is Ed Purcell. Uh, I'm an attorney at Price &amp; Schulman DiArminio, here tonight, representing New Jersey Manufacturers Insurance. Um, so NJM, as you may be aware, has been in Parsippany for quite a long while, and is in the process of moving its offices from 1599 Littleton to One Sylvan Way, that's the property next door to where it currently, um, has its offices. And as part of that move, it's filed this application for minor, minor site plan approval with bulk variance relief to permit it to install a generator on its new site at One Sylvan. Um, and as we're going to talk about, that generator is really absolutely necessary for the work that NJM does. Uh, as you can imagine, if there's a large storm, uh, there's a lot of people who have a need for, uh, to contact their insurance company when there's a large storm, a lot of times, there's a, uh, power outages, and what this generator does, it allows NJM to continue its work, uh, during those events. Uh, this is a pretty straightforward application, uh, with respect to variances, there's a side yard setback variance, um, there's an impervious coverage variance, a fence height variance, and a drive aisle width variance. Uh, tonight, we're going to rely on two witnesses, Bill Vogt, who's going to provide our engineering testimony, and McKinley Mertz, who will be providing our planning testimony. Um, with that, Ms. Stinley, are, are we, um, okay from a housekeeping perspective with our notice?
Um, the notices was, the notices were fine, we can proceed tonight. And I think, were there any waivers required?
Um, let me, just a second. Uh, we recommended that the application can be deemed complete. There are a number in our report, which by the way, is dated May 30th. Um, there were a number of items that were listed, um, as non-applicable, and we don't object to any of those. There were, um, a couple of items that we, that where waivers were requested that we, uh, asked for testimony on. One is the, uh, presence or absence of protective covenants or deed restrictions on the property. Um, we asked for a general description of the proposed development, which we're going to get, not really a completeness issue per se. Um, we asked for, um, some information on site illumination, and that, uh, the applicant confirmed that no changes to existing are proposed, or if there are changes proposed, uh, to what's proposed to describe that. Um, and then there's some issues related to the contractor's construction, uh, temporary trailers, uh, related equipment, um, but we'll assume that they'll be, uh, addressing those as part of their affirmative, uh, presentation.
I'm assuming you will do as the, uh, planner asked?
Correct.
All right, is there a motion to approve the waivers outlined in ARH memo, ARH Associates' memo of May 30th? Do I have a wave, motion?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second, Matt.
All right.
Sorry, Chair.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, sir.
Would you like to swear Mr. Vogt in right now, or Ms. Mertz too, at the same time, or do them separately?
You can do them separately. If you please raise your hand, do you swear affirm that the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name, spell your last name, and provide your address for the record.
Uh, sure. Good evening. Um, my name is William R. Vogt, Jr. It's V as in Victor, O, G like girl, T like Tom. Uh, I'm one of the owners and principals of L2A Land Design LLC, where located at 66 Grand Avenue in Englewood, New Jersey. Um, I have a bachelor's in science in civil engineering from SUNY Buffalo, and I'm a licensed professional engineer in both, uh, the states of New Jersey as well as New York. Um, I've testified, uh, before the Parsippany Board, um, on multiple occasions. My most recent, I have, uh, I think I have four applications in front of your zoning board, uh, currently.
Mr. Chairman, I ask that Mr. Vogt be accepted as an expert in engineering?
Any questions about his qualifications? Hearing and seeing none. Counselor?
Uh, Mr. Vogt, you drafted the zoning drawings that were submitted to the board that were dated December 6th, 2023, and last revised May 1st, 2024, is that correct?
That's correct.
And, uh, did you prepare that aerial, which is?
Uh, I did. That's a Google Earth aerial of the subject property. I can mark that Exhibit A1.
Correct. Yep, thank you very much. Can you review the subject property and the surrounding area to orient the board to the location of the site?
Uh, sure. So what, what I have on the left side is, uh, just a set of the site plans that were submitted, uh, as part of the application. Uh, it's a seven-page set of plans, C01 through C07. They all have revision date number three dated 5/1/2024. Uh, the application is for a, uh, proposed, uh, backup generator, uh, at One Sylvan Way. Um, this is located at, uh, this is Lot 4.01, found in Block 202. Um, just for clarification, your tax map shows the lot as 4.1, it's incorrect on the tax map, uh, so we just noted that it should be 4.01. So that's the, that's just the discrepancy that, um, to bring to your attention. The property is located in the ROL, the Research Office and Laboratory District. Um, and the subject property is within your Highlands planning area. Uh, we do qualify as, uh, for an exemption, uh, number four. Uh, we do not exceed the impervious, uh, coverage, uh, that's allotted for that exemption. Um, so that's stated as well on the cover sheet. On the, on the right hand, this is in, uh, Google Earth aerial, Exhibit A1. Uh, it's probably within the last two years, that's usually what their aerial photographs are from. I have the subject lot, uh, outlined, it's pretty much an L-shaped lot. Um, north is to the right-hand side of the page. Um, to the north of the site, uh, we have Sylvan Way. Uh, to the west of the site, uh, there is, uh, NJM's current location, that's 1599 Littleton Road, which also has frontage along Littleton, Littleton Road, which is, uh, US Highway 202. To the rear, to the south of the property, uh, there are other existing commercial properties. Uh, I believe one of the properties, uh, is currently being developed, um, right now. Uh, to the east of the subject lot is, uh, Number 3 and Number 5 Sylvan Way. Those are under the, uh, same or similar ownership as, uh, One Sylvan Way. The site currently has a three-story, uh, existing commercial building on there. Um, NJM currently, uh, is housed in the adjacent property at 1599 Littleton Road. They are going to move their offices and their operations to the third floor of One Sylvan Way.
Can you talk about the access easements to the property?
Sure. So, access to the subject parcel, uh, One Sylvan Way, is off of Sylvan Way to the north, that's a full access driveway. Um, there are also two other, uh, access points. There's one farther along Sylvan Way to the east, um, that's shared through common, uh, cross-access easements, uh, through 3 and 5 Sylvan Way. And then there is also, uh, cross-access easements through 1599 Littleton Roadway, that's NJM's current property, so that, uh, cars can get out to, uh, Littleton Road. That's a right-in, right-out only driveway off of Littleton, because it's a state highway.
Bill, could you speak a little bit about the parking situation?
Uh, sure. Um, I'm just going to flip to the, uh, flip to the site plan.
And, and Exhibit A1 was prepared by your office?
Uh, yes.
And what is the date? Just today's date?
It's today's date, but the arrow photograph is probably from sometime in '22.
All right, thank you.
Um, so I just, I just flipped to the site plan, that's C-03. So as far as parking, um, the amount of existing parking spaces on the property is 442 parking spaces. That, that comprises of 383 surface parking spaces, and then there are 59 interior garage spaces that are within One Sylvan Way, within the building. Um, under proposed conditions, um, we will be, uh, losing five parking spaces for the installation of the backup generator. Uh, we will have a, uh, total of 437 parking spaces, um, where 434 parking spaces are required. So we're still have an excess of three spaces, uh, for the overall property.
And Bill, could you speak a little bit about the, is there an existing generator on the property, where that's located?
Yes, so looking back at the aerial, you'll see to the western side of the current, uh, NJM location, there's this, uh, smaller rectangular shape that's along Littleton Road. That's their existing, uh, diesel generator. That generator will be relocated to the southwest corner of One Sylvan Way. Uh, so just to the back, uh, left corner of the aerial image. There's an existing, uh, generator that's currently at One Sylvan Way, uh, that services the existing building, and it's for tenant use if they choose to, uh, need it. Unfortunately, it's, it doesn't have enough load capacity for running the operations, uh, for NJM for their entire floor. So, uh, they need to be in operation 24/7. If you remember Hurricane Sandy, they were one of the only businesses, uh, probably in this area that were operating, uh, throughout that superstorm. So, that is the, uh, that's really the main goal of moving that generator to this new location. And it's the same generator, it's a 1 megawatt, uh, capacity, and it has a 2,000 gallon, uh, diesel fuel storage tank that sits underneath it.
Now, Bill, are there any restrictions on the property with respect to the proposed generator use?
Um, no, there's, there's, there's no restrictions, uh, per se, um, not, not that I, not that I know of.
And then, uh, it is in the Highlands, though, correct?
Uh, it is in the Highlands.
And as you said, this proposal would not exceed 125% of the lawfully existing impervious coverage that, that existed on the site when the township opted into Highlands, which is April 21, 2021, is that correct?
That's correct.
Um, can you discuss a little bit more about the generator, um, uh, any, you know, and maybe talk a little about the transfer switch?
Uh, sure. So, um, what I, what I did is I actually prepared another exhibit just to help the board, um, visually see where the generator is going. So, if you look on to Site Plan CO3, I have an enlargement, uh, that's in the bottom right-hand corner. Um, I'll, I'll mark this as, uh, Exhibit A2.
And what sheet was that from again?
It's from C-03.
Thank you.
So, all I did was I expanded, uh, that enlargement, I made it actually bigger, so the board could see it. Um, it's at five scale, um, and the only thing I did is I added color, uh, to help, uh, distinguish for purposes of testimony.
Does this have a, a date on, on that?
It has the same date as the set of site plans, it's Revision 3 dated 5/1/24.
Okay, thank you.
So the, uh, proposed location of the generator, again, is going to be in that back, uh, southwest corner of the property. Uh, currently, what's there is, uh, an existing trash enclosure. Um, we're going to create a brand-new concrete pad for both the trash enclosure and for the, uh, backup generator. The proposed pad for the backup generator, uh, will measure in width, it's 23.5 feet in width, and it is 43 feet in length. And the trash enclosure pad is approximately 24 feet in length and 18 feet in width. Because of the grade change between the two properties, um, directly behind us is where Spencer's Savings Bank is, um, that grade's a little bit lower than us, it varies between three and six feet lower. So the proposed concrete pad will act as a retaining, a small retaining wall, uh, to keep the pad flat to the parking side of One Sylvan Way. So we will have a, a small exposed wall on the western side of the property, uh, between a foot and two foot eight inches. What we're doing to enclose the, um, generator is we're going to build a sound attenuation wall. Um, the sound attenuation wall, uh, will be required to be a minimum of one foot taller than the height of the actual generator. That will, uh, block and attenuate the sound down to the, uh, required noise levels at the property line. Because of the location of the proposed generator, we are very close to the side property line. Um, I am, uh, the generator is at 9.82 feet, and we're required to be at 25 feet. Um, but, out of all of the locations on the property, this is the, uh, the best location. Um, it's also in proximity to the other existing generator, that's approximately 58 feet to the north of the site. It's in an area of the parking lot that is underutilized, it's farthest away from the building. You can tell from the aerial photographs that most of the parking is directly, um, in back or to the south of One Sylvan Way, and as you, uh, go out to the west, you can see that the spaces open up, and there are very few cars that are back in that southwest corner.
Bill, can you talk a little bit about the transfer switches that are going to be proposed?
Uh, sure. So when the lines get fed into the existing building, they will go into an existing utility room that's on the ground floor of One Sylvan Way. It'll go into a panel, um, those switches will have a transfer switch, if, if the, if the power goes out, that, basically, that switch gets thrown, and it brings power from the generator to the panels that feed the building. So it's, should be a seamless transition between when there's a power outage. Um, so, we will, uh, add some notes to the plan of, uh, regarding that, um, to also refer to the MEP plans that are going to be submitted as part of your, uh, building permit applications, um, just so that, uh, those two will marry to each other.
We just want to make a note of that, just that, so we're going to add the, um, the transfer switches to the plans to be approved by the board, you know, the board will approve, and as compliance, we'll add the transfer switches, we're telling you now. Um, just the reason being is that, you know, NJM is currently getting its fit-out approvals for, uh, One Sylvan, and, um, this really needs to be approved, the, the, even though the transfer switches are going to be in the building, this really should be approved as part of this application, and not the construction permit process, the building permit process that's happening, um, with the fit-out. So, I just want to make a note for the record on that. Um, Bill, how often will the generator be exercised?
Uh, sure. It's typically, it's once every two weeks for roughly 20 minutes, and it's during working business hours. So it, it won't be disruptive to any, you know, non-business hours, it won't run on the weekends for testing. Um, so that, that is the, uh, the current schedule, is to, uh, operate, uh, once every two weeks or 20 minutes, uh, during working hours.
And has an acoustical analysis been done?
Yes, we did have an acoustic analysis done, um, that's why we're showing the, uh, enclosure on three sides of the generator, and that's what, uh, distinguishes the height of the sound wall above it.
And that was a report prepared by Lewis S. Goodfriend Associates dated January 30th, 2024?
That's correct.
And what that report shows is, is that the generate, that the generator will not exceed, um, the decibel limitation set forth by the NJDEP, and that's, uh, 65 decibels?
That's correct, at the property line.
Okay. And a copy of the report was provided to the board, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Are there any external lights on the compound for the generator?
Um, we are relying on all of the existing, uh, parking lot lighting, that's currently oper, in operation in the parking lot. The only fixtures that are on the enclosure are the existing ones, uh, and they are at both of the, uh, access doors, and they are just for life safety. They are small, um, standard light fixtures, uh, just to illuminate the doorway, egress and ingress.
And this, those lights would be blocked from views off property by the, by the sound wall, correct?
That's correct. That's correct. One, one will face the sound wall to the west, and the other would face into the parking lot, and it would have no impact on the ambient light, uh, provided by the, uh, parking, uh, lighting.
Are there any external, oh, I, I missed that question. Will there be any ground disturbances or excavations?
Uh, yes, um, we will just be disturbing this area, uh, for the construction of both the concrete pad for the generator, as well as the trash enclosure. I'm going to remove three, uh, existing pine trees that are just, uh, directly behind or to the west. I did speak with, um, with your forestry department, um, and typically what they, uh, said is if I could find room to just put back a few, uh, Green Giant Arboretum to help screen the exposed portion of that concrete wall. And again, that concrete wall is only one foot to roughly three feet tall, um, so just to screen that. They, uh, they are looking at the sound wall itself as screening for the, um, generator.
And NJM would agree to that, is that correct?
Yes.
Uh, and then as far as the square footage, it's 200 square feet additional impervious coverage, is that right?
Yes, if you, uh, if you see, um, the pad extends just about, about a foot and a half behind the existing curb line, uh, in order to get my clearances, uh, from the generator to that sound wall. So I'm adding, uh, 200 square feet of new impervious coverage, it's the minimus, um, but we did add it to the table to, uh, show the coverage calculation, so, um, so the maximum, uh, percent lot coverage, uh, for impervious coverage permitted for the zone is 70%. What we currently have is 80.3%, and then with that additional 200 square foot, I'm going to be at 80.38%. So slightly more, but, um, the minimus in, in my opinion.
And Bill, does the proposed generator impact site circulation or any other considerations site plan?
Uh, no, it, it won't. We, we, again, we kept it in an area of the lot that's, uh, fairly underutilized. Um, we, we are slimming down the, uh, drive aisle, uh, between the generator and the head-in parking, directly opposite, and it's just to get in the protective bollards that surround the generator. I still will maintain a driveway width of at least 22 feet. Um, that's sufficient for backing up of, of the maybe four or five cars that are opposite, um, the generator, and it still provides ample width for any vehicles, emergency vehicles to, uh, traverse the site. Typically, a fire truck, uh, required to have 20 foot, uh, in, in width, um, for their circulation.
Okay. And Bill, could you reviews, can you review the variances required?
Sure. Um, so again, the, uh, I had the impervious coverage variance that I just, uh, went over, um, it's 70% permitted, existing 80.3, proposed 80.38. The, um, the side yard setback for accessory buildings is, uh, required is 25 feet. Currently, the existing generator is at 7.1 feet, and then our proposed generator is at 9.82 feet. So it's farther away than the existing one, um, but still a variance. Okay, the last one is the minimum side and rear yard fence or wall height. Uh, what's permitted in the zone is six feet in height. Um, currently, we're at six feet, um, and we're going to increase that to 15.83 feet, and that is for the sound attenuating wall. So the wall itself is, just for round numbers, about 13 and a half feet tall from the elevation of the proposed slab that the structure sits on, and then I have that retaining wall on the opposite side, so I have to add in another two, you know, two, two and a half feet roughly on there. So, that's where I'm getting to the 15.83 in total height.
And we also need a variance for a drive aisle width, is that correct?
Yes, what I described before, we're going down to, uh, no less than 22 feet.
Uh, have you reviewed the board engineers' February 21st, 2024 memorandum?
I have.
Please go over that?
Sure. Were there, were there any ones in particular that you wanted me, or just go through?
Go through the, the comments in your response.
Okay. Um, okay, so the first one was the applicant should provide testimony regarding generator -- operation and proposed location of the generator. I think we stated that previously. Applicant should provide testimony regarding the status of the existing generator adjacent to and to the north of the proposed generator. Again, I did go through that in my testimony. We are removing, it says four trees in here, it's actually three trees and we're going to replace them with the arborvitae. Number four is testimony regarding the setback wall height, acoustical function and proposed generator sound wall barrier. I believe I went through that in detail with the board. If there's any questions, I'd be sure to, happy to answer them. And then number five, the new generator will reduce the parking space count by five spaces. The plans indicate that the site currently contains 442 parking spaces. The required parking is, is 434 spaces and the new total will be 437 spaces. Again, I went through that in my testimony.
And there was a, was there a reference or a question about Belgium Block?
Yes, we changed the detail out to the more robust RSIS standard. That's the residential site improvement standards for the Belgium Block. That's not an issue, that's already shown on the plans.
And Bill, have you reviewed the board engineer's May 28th, 2024 memorandum?
I have.
And do you have anything to add that wasn't already addressed in the response?
No, I, I think the comments were all very fair and we can address any of the comments that are in either the engineer's or the planner's letter.
And NJM agrees to all the conditions of approval set forth in that memorandum?
That's correct.
And then with respect to the staging of the construction and, you know, any temporary trailers, could you speak to that? There was a question about?
Sure. I mean, it's all going to be done in one phase. NJM is, again, they're moving to this new location. They have to have this generator and their trash area in operation before they move in. So it will be constructed diligently and, and on time. If we do plan some staging areas, I would think we would use the, again, the underutilized parking in the existing lot. This would be more towards the south end of the property. We would also relocate temporarily the trash enclosure, again, to that, that, that southern side of the property. I think that's the most appropriate for this location.
Thank you, Bill. Mr. Chairman, that's all I have for this witness.
Can I ask our engineer if he has any questions or?
No, he covered all my questions.
Very good. The members of the board, do you have any questions?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for test 20. Just want to clarify something. In one of the plans here, I think it's C0, C3, I think, and just at the very bottom, number 19, ongoing routine generator maintenance and test operations shall be performed during the day on Saturdays. You mentioned that it happens during normal business hours?
Yes, I did notice that note. It's incorrect that's on there. It's a leftover note from, we did the original generator or portions of the original generator. It's probably a leftover note from that.
Okay, so it's?
I do apologize. No, it's during the week, Monday through Friday.
Every two, every two weeks.
You got it.
And roughly how much fuel is used?
Well, it's, it's a 2,000 gallon tank. I can find out, I don't know.
For fueling, doesn't need for fueling that often, though?
It wouldn't, not for the normal testing operations. You know, they'll, they'll check it, you know, quarterly, they'll, they'll be under a maintenance contract with, I think it's Cummins is the, is the rep. So they, they come out and do a quarterly inspection and probably after every major storm event, they come out again.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Mr. Math, two questions. So first, on the platform itself, with the enclosures, there's going to be no drop off, open drop offs of more than two and a half feet, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Number two, you said 22 feet was sufficient for a vehicle backing up? Because I'm more familiar that 23 feet is the minimum required for a 90 degree turn.
Well, actually, 24 is really the standard for, for a drive aisle, but with, I can certainly show a truck turning or a car turning maneuver on there. I, I can assure you that 22 feet is more than sufficient for, again, these are, we're talking about five, potentially five parking spaces that may or may not be used.
So it's basically backing up to bollards?
It's backing up, correct.
It's, yeah, well, I think 23 is the actual dimension if you take the design vehicle and then, but they make it 24 for rounding. All right, you're three spaces over, correct?
Correct.
So if you took three of those spaces out, extended that island, ripped them out and vegetated them, you'd actually be able to eliminate your, your impervious coverage variance?
If it's?
You're adding 200 feet, correct?
If it's 200 square foot, yeah, probably three spaces would, would make the numbers balanced.
Okay, I mean, I would, I would suggest you do that just so that A, we're not increasing impervious for a site that's already over impervious and B, taking out three spaces that you're over on anyway that potentially are not quite meeting our dimensions for 90 degree turns.
So, so we would agree to that, so the question is, would we agree to take some of our additional parking spaces and turn them into?
Yeah, extend, extend the, the grass island.
So we would just need to talk to the landlord and, you know, get that approved and then obviously we would have to have your board engineer approve that, but that is something that we would stipulate to.
So you're talking about the spaces that would back up to the generator, not the little?
Correct.
Okay.
Take out three of the spaces that have a substandard aisle.
Your thoughts, Bill?
Just right to the, right to the right of that tree.
It would be these three here. I understand the balancing for the impervious coverage. None of the stormwater that's, that's produced by this 200 square foot is going offsite. It's all being directed back into the parking lot, into the existing drainage facility. I personally don't like to eliminate excess parking on a, on a site. You never know what the change of tenant and climate is moving forward. I would prefer to keep the three spaces. It's the minimus amount of, of impervious coverage. We are adding vegetation back. I, in my opinion, it's more detrimental to get rid of those spaces than to, than to put the green space in there. If this was a bigger development, I would understand your view of it. I personally respectfully disagree with that. That's my opinion.
All right. Okay. Stuart, did you have any, because he commented on some of the planning?
Yeah, I would like, if I could, just to confirm some of the things that I thought I heard. Bear with me a second. So I know you spoke, did you speak to any protective covenants or deed restrictions?
There's none that I am aware of other than the Highlands planning area.
Okay.
And those access, cross accesses easements for ingress and egress and parking.
You spoke to lighting, you just spoke to easements. There are board members, a couple of pre-existing non-conformities that aren't being caused or made worse by this application, they're listed in our report. No easements are impacted at all by this development?
Not that I know of.
Are there going to be any changes to signage?
No signage is part of this application.
You spoke to the trash enclosures for the sound wall. Proposed colors and materials to be used.
Sure, so there, if you look on the, on the plans, on the last sheet, there's a detail, they're going with a system called Quiet Line. It's a steel faced panel with an acoustical membrane inside. That steel panel is galvanized and then it's powder coated. We're going to, there's, there's basically five, five or six standard colors. We're choosing a tan color so it blends in with the landscape around it. And again, like I, like I testified to, that, that wall's roughly about 13 and a half feet tall. It's, it's got to be a minimum one foot taller than the existing or the proposed generator height, which is 11 foot, nine inches.
Okay, I would leave the satisfaction of that finished to the board, but that's all we have.
Sure.
Any other members of the board have any further questions? Other members of the public who have questions on this testimony at this time? Hearing and seeing none?
Mr. Chairman, I think I have one more. You're leaving the old one, the old generator or is that going to be removed?
Yes, this, this is, this is staying, the?
Is it still going to be operating?
Yes.
All right.
Correct.
Why not get rid of that and put Bill to?
What Bill testified with is that doesn't provide adequate capacity for NJM, so that?
So they're both going to be in operation?
Correct. That's correct.
Okay. NJM needs a lot of power, huh?
Well, this, the existing generator is, is offered to the existing tenants that are in the building. So in order for NJM to operate on a full floor for a 24/7 operation, for everything that goes on in their, in their company, they need the same generator that they currently are utilizing.
Thank you.
All right, actually, I have a couple of small questions. If you could at least briefly go over some of the safety features to prevent spillage of diesel fuel and other such things?
Sure, I mean, this, this will all be handled in the building department application. It has to fall, it has to follow all of the current regulations, but there is a 2,000 gallon tank that sits on the ground. It's, it's, it has alarms that are associated with it. It has, it's at least a dual wall, if not more. There is, I can get the complete specs and?
I'm just looking for a summary.
I mean, that's, that's pretty much it, you know?
Concrete pad underneath?
Concrete pad underneath, spill containment is all within the, within the pan of that 2,000 gallon container. And again, it's the current one that is in operation right now. So we're going to empty that one and bring it over, inspect it, make sure everything is tip top and then reinstall that thing again.
Okay, so you're going to leave the old one without a?
The old, the old one is not under my control. That, that is, that is owned by the property owner and offered to their tenants.
Okay, very good.
No fuel.
No fuel for it, eh? I think we have a maximum of 800 gallons in this town, so I'm not, I know we usually allow them to have the 2,000 gallons. And maybe the?
It depends on whether it's in a operafer area.
Ah, okay.
Just to go back, you know, with respect to the impervious coverage discussion?
Yes.
So now obviously I think there's a, if the board really demands that that be done, I think NJM would consider it. I think it would prefer not to do that, given the diminutive nature of the previous coverage increase of like 200 square feet, but you know, certainly curious to get some feedback from the board on that.
We'll have some further discussions about that as we go along.
Okay.
All right, any other questions? Any members of the public have any questions? Hearing and seeing none. Counselor, you can move on.
Okay.
Your next witness?
Next witness is McKinley Mertz. A planner.
Could you please raise your hand? Do you swear affirm that the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Thank you.
Please state your name, spell your last name and write your address for the record.
Hello, McKinley Mertz, M E R T Z. Business address is 236 Broad Street in Red Bank, New Jersey.
Ms. Mertz, can you go over your qualifications and experience?
I'm a principal planner at Higher Rule and Associates. Again, we're out of Red Bank, New Jersey. I have a master's in city and regional planning from Rutgers University. I've been qualified as an expert in front of several boards across New Jersey. Closest to here would be Wayne Branchburg. I also serve as a board planner on approximately 10 different boards. Closest to here would be Harding Township and New Providence. I've also been a fan of the New Jersey Superior Court regarding affordable housing matters.
Mr. Chairman, I ask that Ms. Mertz be accepted as an expert planning?
Any question on the witnesses' qualifications? Hearing and seeing none?
Ms. Mertz, can you go over the surrounding area and the zoning for the site?
Sure, the engineer testified to it, so I'll go briefly, but we are in the research office and laboratory zone, the ROL zone. All of the properties, as can be seen on that aerial, to our northwest and east are in the same zone. The properties to the south of us are in the special economic development district 10 zone with a single parcel directly south, which is towards the lower left corner of that aerial. That is in the affordable housing district 3A zone. I believe that is currently under construction, which with what I would assume is a residential development based on the, based on the zoning. The property is 5.76 acres. It is developed with the existing three-story masonry building that's currently occupied by other office tenants. The other buildings surrounding us, with the exception of the property under construction, are developed with other office park type developments and tenants.
Thank you, McKinley. Can you go over the zoning for the site and the new variances?
Sure, the ROL zone does permit professional and business offices. NJM, which already exists in the parcel to the west there, will be situated in the subject property, which is a permitted use. The proposed generator is a permitted accessory use as it's customary and incidental to a permitted office use. As your planner indicated and was in his report, we have a few existing non-conforming conditions, just for the benefit of the record, those would be lot width at building setback line is required to be 300 feet, where the existing lot is 236.84 feet. The side yard setback for the principal building, which again, we are not touching, that's remaining as is, that is required to be 50 foot setback for one side yard, 100 feet for both, where we have a, one of our side yard setbacks is only 30.1 feet combined, making that 84.4 feet. For the side yard setback for accessory uses, which the engineer testified to, for the existing generator that we are not touching, that is required to be 25 feet, where that exists at 7.1 feet. The new variances requested, again, side yard setback for accessory use, our new accessory use required to be 25 feet. We're at 9.82 feet from the side yard setback that shares the property line with the bank to the west. The discussion we just had with impervious coverage, we're required to, 70% is the limit where 80.3% exists and we're increasing that by 0.08% or 200 square feet. The wall height for our sound barrier is permitted at six feet, proposed as calculated in the way the engineer described. We are at 15.83 feet to achieve that one foot above the height of the generator itself. And finally, the drive aisle width, which again, we've been discussing, the ordinance requires us at 24 feet with those protective bollards. We are just under, I believe the engineer's report called it out at 1.4 feet deficient, so closer to 22 feet. And it's my opinion that all of these can be justified under the C2 flexible variance per the municipal land use law. This one's also known as the benefits versus detriments variance, whereas granting the benefits would outweigh any potential detriments associated with them. So to run through that positive criteria quickly, we are permitted accessory use that's associated with a permitted principal use on the subject property. In terms of the setback variance, as the engineer talked about at length, we really do feel this location is the most appropriate, given the site that it's already developed, it's, this parking lot is existing, the building's existing. We feel it's pushed back as far as we can for safety reasons, but also to allow as little encroachment into the parking area. If we were to pull that away from the side lot line to meet that 25 feet, we would be disrupting many more parking spaces as well as a much greater length of the drive aisle. So this is preserving the maximum parking spaces feasible. I know we are talking about perhaps eliminating three more, however, even if we were to eliminate those three, we'd still be within the required parking count. If we were to pull this away to meet the 25 feet, we would absolutely trigger a parking variance by having to eliminate additional, additional parking spaces. As to the sound barrier, the height of the barrier, this has been calculated to, again, screen the barrier, I'm sorry, screen the generator to the extent necessary, but it's also providing an aesthetic barrier. For the most part, we do have other commercial neighbors, but they are developing a residential development to our south, so this will provide not only a sound attenuation, but also a visual screening of the generator itself. And that height is necessary? And that height is necessary to achieve both of those functions. As to the coverage, again, I know where the board is debating about asking us to eliminate that variance, but but should we continue to require that? I would argue, and I think one of the board members mentioned, it really is a de minimis deviation that we have here, 0.08% or 200 square feet. And additionally, we've agreed to coordinate with the forester to replace trees to help offset. Depending on how your deliberation goes, we may be able to to gain some of that back, if if you please. As to the drive aisle width, the engineer testified that the 22 feet that will be in existence for those five spaces is sufficient for a backup. Again, we're at the far, far corner of the property, where it's the least desirable places to park. I did a site visit on May 23rd, which was a Thursday, right around 4 o'clock. The it was really right before everybody was leaving work. There were enough cars in the parking area to edge them back to that corner, but the area surrounding the the proposed generator site, as well as the dumpsters back there, really was devoid of of cars completely. So it again, we do not see that as a major issue, but it would allow those parking spaces to be there should should they be needed in the future. As to the the second half of the C2 testimony, we're required to prove that the purposes of the municipal land use law will be advanced by these deviations. I know this is every board's favorite part, so I'll speak quickly. We believe it advances purpose A, which is to guide the appropriate use or development of all lands that will promote the public health, safety morals, and general welfare. I think this is the most important one. As was testified to, this generator is needed for emergency purposes, for lifesaving measures for NJM. We've referred to Sandy already. They've been in this location for quite some time, and when Sandy hit, they did not shut down once. These storms are becoming quite a bit more frequent, as we all know, so we want to make sure that they can stay in Persephone and be able to function should another one of these storms hit. At this point, it's not even should, it's when another storm hits. So it really is going to continue to promote that that public health and safety. Additionally, purpose G, which is to provide sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of uses. NJM is a long-term tenant here. They are permitted tenant. And by allowing allowing them to build their generator where we are proposing, they're going to continue to be able to stay at the One Sylvan Way office complex here. And finally, I to promote a desirable visual environment. We are, again, this the generator is a necessity, but we're doing everything we can to help shield it between the sound barrier itself, adding adding the additional trees that the forester has requested, and cleaning up the refuse and recycling area over there to make it generally more pleasing from a visual perspective. As to the negative criteria, we have to demonstrate that granting these variances will not substantially impair or substantially create a detriment to the public good or the township zoning plan. The Township's 2020 master plan notes that the ROL zone is designed to encompass large-scale office and manufacturing businesses. Again, NJM needs the generator to function, so this will allow them to continue to stay stay in Persephone. We are proposing improvements to an already-developed site, where we need to work around the existing the existing layout and improvements. The generator, again, is a permitted use, will support a permitted principal use, and will be screened from neighboring properties. While we're reducing the parking count, we're still within the required parking spaces number, so we're not causing any detriment to the parking itself. And finally, the proposed generator will and its enclosure will have very little impact on the surrounding site. I doubt anyone will even notice it once it's there. I didn't notice the existing one until I really got right up close to it during when I was visiting the site. And just generally, the existing non-conforming conditions, again, as you guys heard, all of those conditions are related to the shape of the property. We're not changing anything, but just to be prudent, I would argue that those all of those existing non-conforming conditions would fall under the C1 hardship variance, where we don't have the capacity to expand the site, and it's been in existence for for quite some time.
So is that your opinion that the Orchard Grand Minor Site Plan approval with variance relief?
Yes, it is.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all I have from McKinley.
I I really, other than what I have spoken about earlier, I have nothing to add. I think the positive and negative criteria are sufficiently for you.
All right. The members of the board have any questions on this testimony at this time? Hearing and seeing none. Mr. Canjiano, do you have any?
Yeah, I just wanted to add, thinking about Mr. Mertz's comment about the concern with the vehicle, standard-sized vehicle backing out to a non-standard zone. I mean, it looks like you don't you're allowed in the zone to have compact spaces for employee vehicles, which is a 16-foot-deep parking stall. It looks like from the existing provisions, you don't have you definitely don't have the it looks like most of the spaces, if not all, are standard. One suggestion would be to label those and redo your parking table based on having five compact car spaces at that location. Just a suggestion. The yeah, the ordinance allows it. It's Section 43275.
Yeah.
For compact spaces.
So we'd have five. So 434 required, we have 437. So you're saying take five of the existing 437s?
Yeah, there's still counts toward the parking count. You're allowed to have a certain number of 25% of your parking count to be compact spaces. Clearly, this is nowhere near 25%. So you you know, you'll meet the requirement of that. I just, again, it's a suggestion that you don't if you could avoid the variance for drive aisle relief, and yet, you know, it'd be limited to smaller vehicles that 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 can navigate that turn better.
Bill, do you have any comments on that?
I I don't have any issues with that. I would just say I would have to check the interior spaces to see if there are any compact spaces in there. I don't think I'll be anywhere close to the 25%, but I would just like to leave that as something we need to just find out and present that on the revised plans.
You would agree to work with our engineer on making sure that this is properly cared for, if we make that part of it a condition of approval?
That would be fine. I think it's a very good suggestion.
Right.
So we should ask for the relief now, in case you can't do the compact space?
Yeah, that's correct, yeah.
With the proviso that if you can do it, you will do.
Correct.
And you'll work with our with Mr. Canjiano on making sure that it's done right?
That's correct.
Good.
Great.
Okay. Any other questions from members of the board? Are there any questions from members of the public? Hearing and seeing none. Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a pretty straightforward application. As McKinley stated, it makes planning sense to place a generator at the edge of the property and not, you know, with a not right in the middle of the property, in the middle of a developed parking lot. The impervious coverage increase really is quite de minimis. You know, the fence height is necessary. The driveway aisle width doesn't particularly impact circulation, and if we can make the changes to mark these for smaller cars, as suggested by your engineer, that certainly would be helpful. But certainly, we've set forth the positive and negative criteria that's necessary for these variances. I asked the board to approve the variances, along with approving site plan approval.
All right. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak in support of or in opposition to this application? Hearing and seeing none. This closes the evidentiary portion of tonight's hearing. Is there a desire to go into conference, or is somebody willing to move the motion? Mr. Shaw?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to move application number 23,534, New Jersey Manufacturers Insurance Company, One Sylvan Way, Block 202, Lot 4.1, minor site plan variance to install a generator. I should be approved.
Mr. Steinle, do we have any?
There were a couple of conditions agreed to, that the transfer switches notes will be added to the plans, that the applicant agrees to address the comments and concerns in the board engineer's report. That the applicant will work with the township parks and forestry to install the landscaping of Green Giant Arborvitae, to screen the concrete wall. And the last one was about the compact parking spaces that the applicant will work with the board engineer to confirm the labeling of those five parking spaces across from the generator building to be compact.
If that's feasible, we'll proceed to do that.
If it's feasible.
Yeah.
Second, Napolitano? Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Matt?
Yes.
Napolitano?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Andy L?
Yes.
In four.
Yes.
All right.
Thank you very much.
So you can contact Nora for the details of when it's going to be memorialized and so forth. And move on. All right, that brings us to our next case. I assume everybody's more than happy to continue sitting and move forward from here.
I'm sure.
That brings us to application number 24,503, SIG Six Sylvan LLC, preliminary and final site plan for Block 202, Lot 1.9, for construction of a health and fitness club, parking deck, outdoor pool, landscaping, and driveway improvements on the south parcel and 280-unit multifamily inclusionary residential building with garage parking, amenities and site improvements on the north parcel.
All set, Mr. Chairman?
I am.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board, board professionals, and the public. My name is John Inglesino, partner with the law firm of Inglesino Taylor. We're here tonight on behalf of the applicants, Canso Persipony Urban Renewal LLC and SIG Sylvan Club Urban Renewal LLC. The property, which is the subject of this application, is located at 6 Sylvan Way. It consists of approximately 18 acres. There is currently an obsolete vacant 200,000-square-foot office building on this site, which was vacated by Avis. Both applicants are designated redevelopers for their respective portions of the property, which is the subject of this application. Both application both applicants are seeking preliminary and final subdivision approval, and both applicants are seeking preliminary and final major site plan approval from the board to approve their respective projects. The subject property is identified as Block 202, Lot 1.9. I think the tax records say Lot 1.09. I spoke with Dan Cassis. He says it's Lot 1.9. The property is located in the Sylvan Way redevelopment area, and the application is submitted pursuant to the township's redevelopment plan for the Sylvan Way redevelopment area and consistent with the signed redevelopment agreements. The proposed subdivision will create two lots. The first lot will be 1.901. We refer to that as the south parcel, and it's approximately 8.93 acres in size. The second lot, which will be Lot 1.902, will be referred to as the north parcel, and that's about 9.71 acres. The overall project consists of the removal of the office building, pavement, and other obsolete improvements on the site. Virtually virtually all of the improvements are within the existing developed area of the subject property. We do get 10,000 square feet of additional area to be exempt from the highlands, which which we're utilizing. You'll hear testimony that the redevelopment of the site, per this application, will improve the property from an environmental perspective over its current conditions. Last year, based on the unanimous recommendation of this board, the town council declared the property to be an area in need of redevelopment, approved comprehensive redevelopment plan, and approved redevelopment agreements with both applicants. There are numerous public actions that have been taken regarding this project. And just so it's in the record, I just want to enter into the records the redevelopment agreements and redevelopment plan as A1. He'd be kind enough to supply that with with Nora for distribution to the board. Now, with regard to the south parcel, the property owner and the applicant designated, SIG Sylvan, seek site plan approval for the construction of a two-story, approximately 103,000-square-foot luxury health and fitness club to be occupied by Lifetime Fitness pursuant to a lease agreement. A separate parking deck with 393 parking spaces is proposed to the east of the health club, before the health club's use, and on the on the south parcel. And there'll be additional improvements, which you'll hear about as well, including an outdoor pool, landscaping, driveway improvements, et cetera. With regard to the north parcel, Canso, who was an affiliate of Avalon Bay Communities, Inc., as you know, a public company who develops, owns, and manages luxury apartment communities throughout New Jersey and many other states, is for those Avalon Bay well. Canso is the designated redeveloper and applicant for the north parcel. Canso is also the contract purchaser for the north parcel. And Canso seeks preliminary and major final site plan approval for the construction of a 280-unit multifamily inclusionary residential building. Now, the affordable housing units from the project helped replace a proposed but never constructed inclusionary development at the former Kmart building, located at 808 Route 46. The Kmart site was included in the township's 2019 Housing Element and Fair Share Plan, and it was included in the township's midpoint review dated June 25, 2020. However, the developer of the Kmart site opted to do a retail facility at the location, hence the need for the Canso project from an affordable housing perspective to keep Persephone in compliance with its obligations from the third round in that regard. Additional amenities and improvements are proposed, including a private parking garage. You will you will hear testimony that these improvements are permitted by and consistent with the redevelopment plan, with very limited deviations. The Canso property will have ingress and egress to and from Sylvan Way via an access agreement with SIG Sylvan. That easement has been prepared. It's been agreed to by the parties. It will be executed at their closing. It'll be recorded with the Morris County Clerk's Office. We can make those representations. I'll share it with Marina for her review and approval. We could probably do that even during the course of these hearings, so it's incorporated into the approval. It wouldn't even be a condition. We do have a few waivers that are being requested. Those are referenced in ARH's completeness and technical review report dated May 20 of 2024. And Canso is seeking or requesting a slight deviation regarding minimum parking. SIG Sylvan is requesting a deviation or assigned design waiver potentially regarding the parking garage servicing, the Lifetime Fitness. And I know there'll be some discussion about a request for a deviation regarding the sidewalk on Sylvan Way. We've received several review letters, just to make sure that we're all on the same page here. Just like to call them out. We have the planners' completeness and technical review number two by ARH dated May 20 of this year. We have the planners' completeness and technical review number one from ARH dated April 9 of this year. We have the GPI review letter dated April 29 of this year. We have the fire protection subcode report dated April 18 of this year. We have the sewer utility report dated March 19 of this year. We have the Persipony Troy Hills Fire Department District 6 letter dated March 12 of this year. year, received today. And then we have the Water Department memo dated May 24 of this year. We've also submitted our plans to several outside agencies, including the Morris County Planning Board, Morris County Soil Conservation, the DEP. Again, it's our view, and I'm sure Mr. Weiser's going to comment on this, is that we're exempt from Highlands Council review because we're disturbing less than 10,000 square feet or less than a quarter of acre in new purview coverage. Mr. Chairman, we always appreciate advanced receipt of your professionals' comprehensive reports, so as usual, to be more efficient, we'll try to incorporate in our affirmative testimony, you know, to cover those issues that are raised in those reports to make this as efficient as possible. Now, we have seven witnesses for this application, but something tells me we're not going to hear all of them this evening. But you know, you never know. So first, we have the project engineer, Mario Ionelli. He is our civil engineer from Dewberry. And second, we have a traffic engineer, Andrew Bicchio, from Stonefield Engineering and Design. They are going to testify as to the site as a whole, because the civil engineering and the traffic kind of lends itself to the site as a whole. And then there'll be, you know, architectural testimony with regard to both the Avalon or Canso project and the Lifetime project. We'll have separate testimony on the garage that I referenced that is on the south parcel or Lifetime, and then we also have a planner, Paul Gregel, who will write testimony with regard to the deviations. We do have representatives from SIG property owners, representative here, Rich Travolini. We have a Canso representative here, Ron Liddell, from Avalon Bay, and we have some representatives from Lifetime Fitness in case any issues arise concerning those entities. So without any further ado, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to call our engineer.
Oh, we're going to get to the waivers here. Thank you.
Can I just ask a quick question? Is the gym for the people who are going to live in this building, or is it open to the public?
The gym is open to the public. Obviously, there's some synergy between the Avalon Bay product type and the proximity to the gym, so there's a natural nexus there. But this is 103,000-square-foot Lifetime Fitness. It will be open to the public. It's not unlike their one down in Bridgewater, if you've ever had a chance to be there or go online and look at it, and I think you'll see that it's a state-of-the-art, full-service.
Just making sure, was it exclusive to the?
No, 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 no. This is open to the public.
All right.
So, Chairman, as usual, you are correct. Let's go to the waivers and the Highlands Council and the Highlands exemption.
So, thank you, Mr. Chairman. As council has indicated, our report was submitted, report number two, May 20. We are recommending that the application be deemed complete. There are a number of waivers that are requested. There was a general description that we requested that I think we've just heard. There are a number of other items that... Let me go through floor plans for existing and proposed buildings. They've given us the floor plans for the proposed. The existing buildings are going to be demolished, same for the signs, same for utilities, site illumination, a number of those things. They'll, I'm sure, go through the demolition program as well as the development program. We requested a number of... We requested that, rather than it be a strict waiver, that it be deferred to testimony for a number of items. I'm sure we'll get into that as well. Other than that, there's some issues related to the map filing law as well as statements for the township engineer regarding utilities. All of those, we would request become a condition of approval. So the bottom line is, we do believe that this application can be deemed complete, and we also, as prompted by Mr. Inglisino, we do have a determination from Christine Winter, who is the township's Highlands professional, certified professional, that this development is exempt.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the waivers outlined in the ARH memo of May 20, 2024?
I'll make a motion for that.
Thank you, Mr. Napolitano. I have a second.
Second.
Mr. Stanziel. Very good. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear from the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Please state your names, tell your last name and write your address for the record.
Good evening. My name is...
I don't think so.
Didn't we tell you that last name?
You got to speak a little louder into that one.
My name is Mario Ionelli. I'm an associate vice president with Dewberry, manager of the Land Development Services. My address is 600 Precipiny Road, Precipiny, New Jersey. I can go into my qualifications. I've been in front of this board for a while. It's been a while, but I've been in front of this board.
Your license is still valid?
Yes.
And you've... I mean, we offer him as an expert in civil engineering, unless you want the whole va deur. I know Mr. Ionelli has been before the board before.
Anybody want the whole thing? Any questions about the man's qualifications to present before us? Hearing and seeing none.
All right. Mr. Ionelli, could you kindly describe the civil engineering aspects of this project for the board?
Sure. I do have copies of the exhibits that I requested to bring. I want me to get them out.
People want to see the exhibits? We've got a stack of papers. Like, this is only half of.
Yeah, we thought it might be beneficial for the board to have 11 by 17s of the exhibits.
Do I have that one in here?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That one's not in here.
What's that?
That one's not in here.
It should have been. Did you hear that?
Someone put it to mute. There's a little...
I think it's on. The volume just isn't right.
Somebody mute it.
Oh, okay.
This button here, this is on. Down is muted.
Actually, if you're going to go speak at the exhibits.
Let me get these out. I'm going to hand out packets of the exhibits for the site and also the rendering. So this would be A... Should we just... One of these is A2.
Yeah, that's fine. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mr. Ionelli, if you could just describe briefly what's in A2 for everybody.
Can we get one more copy over here?
So the packet I just handed out contains a number of exhibits. I'll just explain some really quick. The first one is EXHB101. That is an aerial of the existing site. EXHB02 is a large-scale aerial of the site or a blow-up. C106 is in your packet. We just colorized the subdivision. C103 is in the packet. We just added some highlights and some photos of the site. W101 is a wetlands transition area that's pending at the DEP. W102 is riparian zone area plan. W102, that is a plan that depicts the riparian zones of the site. C115 is a fire lane sketch through coordination with your code official. And also, I think that's it. So I don't have to mark these now, right? They're all marked. Correct. So we're going to start with the existing site. On the left there, you have EXHB02, an aerial of the site. So what you can see from the aerial of the site is that it's roughly 18 acres. I'm highlighting the white line that represents the property line. On the left is Sylvan Way. On the right, north is to your right, is where the existing ball fields are, and you can see the existing building and the existing parking lot highlighted, and you can see the scope and magnitude of the existing improvements. The site constraints on the right, the property size is about 30,000 square foot footprint and about 190,000... 50,000 square foot footprint and 190,000 square foot total property. The existing site has, as you can see, roughly... The existing site has roughly 749 parking spaces in the existing condition, or about six acres of pavement. The site on the right, I'm going to refer to some of the constraints that's kind of important to understand, is C103. Again, this is Sylvan Way running along the front here. You have a stream that's running in the front that drains from the left down to the page, which is in the easterly direction. And then on the right-hand side, you have the portion of Mirror Pond, which is located to the, I would say, the east or northeast of the site. So what I'm trying to represent here, if you look at these two exhibits next to each other, is that the site is predominantly developed in this existing condition, except for the northern portion of the site, which is wooded and has recreational fields. And you can also see from the exhibit on the right, 103, that the site is encumbered on both the south and north of the site. If you look closely at the C103, the green highlighted area that I'm showing here, which is in front of the building, if you look to the left, which is EXHB0102, you can see the existing stream that's running along parallel Sylvan Way. What I'm representing on C103 is the blue line you see there is the flood plain that's associated. Right now, it's at DEP and it's pending review. Because of the type of stream and how steep the stream is, the floodway in that location or the floodplain in that location is actually equivalent to the floodway. So the floodway, because of the... When we model the site, the DEP is basically requiring us to expand the floodway to be the entire floodplain. Now, just for a little bit of background, your floodplain and your floodway, your floodway is a very highly regulated area within the floodplain rules. And your floodplain, which is clearly the flood fringe, is outside the floodplain but within the flood area. So when you're in the floodway, it becomes very highly restrictive to what you can do with it. So what we did is, we modeled it. We noticed that the floodway is actually going over the culvert roughly a little under a foot. So the whole front of the site along Sylvan Way is encumbered by this floodway for the most part. Now, it does tail off as you get to the west. You can see the red line kind of peels off the blue, but from here, which is the western property line, southwestern property line, all the way to the southeast corner of the site, the floodway and the floodplain coincide. So also, the highlighted in green is the riparian zone. That riparian zone is a buffer 50 foot on the banks of that stream, which is regulated and is to protect vegetation to promote water quality. That currently is 100% for the most part maintained law, except for the area of the channel and by the culvert. So that area is, like most office parks, are maintained law, and ideally, from a DEP perspective, that does not promote good water quality because, you know, they want you to protect within 50 feet of these streams to enhance the landscaping, and you'll hear more about that. So along Sylvan Way, we have a riparian buffer that's encumbering the site, and we also have a floodway and a floodplain. If you look at the photos that I inserted on photo one and photo two, you can see, especially photo two, you can see that the two entrance ways that John just referred to, the two access points back to the aerial, there's an existing two-way driveway on the northeast corner and, I'm sorry, the southeast corner, and also one on the southwest corner. Those driveways go over a existing culvert that's roughly 16 foot wide, five foot high and about 32 foot long. If you look closely at the photo, the width of the road is equivalent to the width of the culvert, so there's really no flexibility. If you look at photo number two, you can see clearly that the culvert's wall is literally where the curb is for the driveway. So if you look at the other photo, that same situation occurs on the other culvert that's on the southwest corner. So the floodplain elevation, the road elevation in those areas range from like 309, 310, and the floodplain's about 310, 3.7. So it's under a foot floodplain going over the culvert, and the drainage area is, so you know for this site, is draining roughly 420 acres of upstream area. So there's a significant amount of flow coming through this stream. We also delineated the floodplain for Mirror Pond. You can see from that, in C103, that's much more... That's actually north of the fields, so it really doesn't impact anything on the site. What's more important on the north side, again, to your right on C103, are the wetland areas that were noted. There were two wetland areas noted, one in the wooded area, one along the detention basin, which is really just not maintained, so turned into a wetland. And also, we have met with the DEP. They think, they're saying there's another wetland that may exist in this northwest corner, but it really will have no impact on the constraints. All of this is now in front of the DEP. We have submitted. We've done the technical review. We're submitting comments to them. They should be going in a week from today, and we're expecting the permit to be decided upon by the end of the month. So we're pretty confident where we are with the constraints. And what I mean by that is that these wetland areas, we're very confident in the 3-foot, I mean, the 50-foot buffer. They've confirmed that for us, and we're also confirming the 50-foot buffer on the riparian. And to put it in perspective, in last July, they adopted new rules in DEP, Stormwater Management. I'm sure you guys are familiar with seeing applications all the time. These new rules basically have projected... The storms that we have to now handle as a civil engineer used to be 8.4 inches in 24 hours. With the new rules last July, that was increased to almost 12.3 inches. So the culverts probably operated fine under the old rules, but with the new increase of almost 50% of flow, it was... I'm surprised they're doing as well as, to be honest with you, they were pretty well-designed, at least when it came to their size. So pending applications with the DEP include a flood hazard area, line verification for the floodplain, wetlands transition area waiver, and a LOI, a letter of interpretation.
Mr. Ionelli, I indicated that the redevelopment of the site will predominantly be on the existing developed site, correct?
That is correct.
Can you show on the aerial exhibit roughly where the additional development will occur and testify as to whether or not the trees and the ball fields will remain intact?
I read my mind. If you look at this parking lot, if you squared it off, that's literally what we're doing. If you took this line, which I'm referring to, EXHB02 on the western line of pavement, you extended that and you extended this pavement, we're just squaring that off as part of the development.
And that gets you your 10,000 feet and keeps you under the Highlands exemption.
Correct. We are currently, and as you'll hear, we're reducing purview coverage, so that has... We had some comments that came in from some of your professionals, but we're still going to meet the Highlands exemption without a problem. but we're still going to meet the Highlands exemption without a problem. One of the things you should point out about this site, it's got over six acres of vehicular pavement that is not being treated. There is no detention basin. There's a ridge line that runs right about the building. Most of the site runs down to a collection system in the parking lot. It goes out a thirty-six inch pipe, right about where I'm showing here into the adjacent lot, and then comes out and discharges and ultimately gets to the same brook. So all of this pavement, all six acres plus of it, is discharging directly into the stream, really not getting any treatment whatsoever. And also, one of the things that this site does not provide, the front of the site, is maintained lawn. It doesn't provide any water quality benefit at all to the front stream. So if we continue a little bit further, again, just to emphasize, the rear of the site, there are no wetlands in the south of the site. The stream here was designated as stable water, only has a riparian. And the most significant thing we have to deal with is the floodway. If you continue to talk about the floodplain and floodway, what hurdles they had, the site is literally bookended. You know, on each side, we have a constraint that's kind of keeping us within the existing development. Currently, the site utilities are all but the drainage that leaves on that thirty-six inch pipe. It all basically gets handled through the existing utilities in Sylvan. The, there's an existing twelve-inch water main that's feeding the site currently. There's an existing eight-inch sewer that's leaving the site that we're going to reutilize. The power, the gas, and the communications all come in from Sylvan. And I want to reemphasize, too, we are not touching anything beyond, for any utility work, for any proposed work, beyond the wood line for the most part, where the edge of the parking lot is. This field, the way it is now, is going to stay. And also, the access to the field will continue to come through more. So we're really not affecting the field at all.
As you do know, that for many years, people used the back of that parking lot to access the Little League fields.
Okay.
Just, that's not happening anymore?
Well, we're not making an official connection between the two now. There's a path out there, right?
Oh, there's a path.
Yeah.
There's been paths. Trust me, I've been in that field, those fields more than I've been at home. And I've been raking those fields, and I know all about the water problems. So, yeah, so you're not going to have any access for people to park there or walk to the back to the field, so to say.
That's correct.
Okay.
The property, as John has said, is zoned, research office and laboratory, but it is located within the redevelopment, Sylvan Way redevelopment, which was adopted in November eleventh, two thousand twenty-three. And again, just to summarize some key factors on the existing condition, the six point seven acres of vehicular pavement that's untreated, being discharged, the riparian zones that are completely, almost fully maintained, providing no environmental benefit at all to the front stream or the stream on the south. Mentioned the fact that we are preserving and not affecting the wooded, in the wooded area by the fields or the fields themselves. So that moves us on to the proposed development.
And all what you just talked about is at the DEP right now? That's the plan you have for them, that they're looking at?
Call this A three, if you can describe that when you get to a microphone.
Yeah, there's no room for parking for far west anymore. That's gone.
So the renderings I gave you, I'm going to be really referring tonight to the first page, which is an overall rendering. This is a.
So, yeah, just describe A three.
So what you have here is the rendered landscape plan. Just so you know, there's multiple professionals on this site. This landscape plan was prepared by Newberry and Bill and Battle. So they'll be testifying when it comes to the courtyards and the landscaping associated with the residential. And I'll be focusing more on the landscaping when it comes to stormwater. Put it on the. So. Next to that, the subdivision at some point, that's impacted already. That I gave you in the first. So what you have in front of you is a rendered landscape plan on the left. We have on the left is the landscape rendered. That shows the site, courtyards, and it gives you a scope and an idea of how many, how much landscaping that we're actually proposing at the site. And we'll get into that in a little bit, why we, why there's so much landscaping, not only from an aesthetic perspective, from a stormwater perspective. So as you can see from, I'm referring to the rendering on the left, you can see that the access points on Sylvan are being maintained. The culverts are being maintained. We're not touching or upgrading the culverts at all. It would be very difficult to touch those culverts because you would have to demonstrate downstream no impacts. So fortunately, the DEP has agreed with us. So right now, they're reviewing it, and the culvert is staying as is. Then the access points are going to be two, both entrance ways are both full access. They're in and out. So that's going to be maintained. So what is getting constructed then, if you look at, and I'll go through it quickly, the left side of this campus, which I'm highlighting, is what John referred to as the south parcel. What you see here, there's two buildings, which is the Lifetime Building and the standalone garage, and an outdoor pool deck that includes two pools and a water slide. You'll be hearing more about some of the programming that goes on there from the Lifetime representative. And then the line, again, roughly running with this road here is the north side. The north side includes the entire remainder of the campus and the ball fields. So when I refer to the south side of the site, that's really Lifetime. The north side is the residential. So I'm going to start with just Lifetime first. As you see, there's three buildings, I'm sorry, on an overall basis, I'm sorry. There's a, I just went through the three buildings. On the overview of the site and the access, you can see that we're maintaining it. The key is, is this loop road, eighteen hundred foot loop road that gets constructed, that goes in a, runs a, from south to north, and then east to west, and then south, north to south. That's about eighteen hundred feet loop road. That will be the easement. Now, I'm going to refer to the right, that's the subdivision. I'm just highlighting in color, you can see that the green here is the north parcel, which is residential. The pink color here is the south parcel. And what I've highlighted, and we've highlighted here in the dark color, is that access easement. Now, the access easement, it's not just access, it's utilities. It's basically for vehicular and all the services, water, sewer, and everything else that the residential requires. And all of that goes through back to Sylvan. Again, nothing goes to the north. So when we do the subdivision, as John had mentioned, there's existing one lot, one point oh nine, is roughly eighteen acres. The new lot for the south, or Lifetime, is going to be lot one point oh nine one, and it has an area of about eight point nine acres. And the north lot, which is the residential lot, is going to be one point oh nine two, which have about nine point seven acres in area. Some of the key things I want to point out in the subdivision are a couple of easements. There is a thirty-six inch pipe that leaves our site, right here, I'm highlighting it, that all the water from the majority of our existing site goes out that thirty-six inch, and that goes on to the adjacent property. There is a thirty-foot wide easement that comes in from the northwest. It comes in and actually is what feeds Mirror Pond. There is an elliptical pipe, it's a three foot high by six foot wide pipe. That's basically where Mirror Pond gets all of the runoff, or just about all of the runoff. The existing ball fields resides in an easement. And there's also a sixteen-foot easement that runs along the frontage of Sylvan, the entire frontage, which is an JCPNL easement. And there's also a fifteen-foot easement that comes in underneath the culvert that feeds some of the electrical equipment on site. So those are the main easements that we have to consider when we were designing the site. So from an overall perspective, when we demo the site, the site will be demoed, everything basically on the site will be removed, building.
There you go.
Take the microphone. Referring to EX HB oh two, that's the aerial. Everything you see there, for the most part, is being removed. All the existing, for most part, the existing drainage is being replaced, except for the culverts. All the utilities, the pavement, the buildings. We are being very conscientious, though, again, with the wooded area at the north and the floodplain and the area to the south by the existing stream. So now, when you go back to the rendering of the proposed, I want to just talk about a little bit about vehicular access. I got to get myself a pair of bifocals, I'm dying with this. So when you look at the south parcel, this loop road that goes around provides access. And again, to Lifetime, their garage, which I'm highlighting, the standalone garage, has access from that loop road. And I'm going to, this is referred to on the plan as Road A, a driveway A. So access to the garage comes in either at the east side or from the north side, or from that Loop A, which goes around from both access points. So you can get there from either access point. The front of the Lifetime building is the front door is right here. So when you walk out of the garage, right, and you park in the garage, you also have surface spaces, but you walk out of the garage, it's a short walk right into the front door of the facility. The garage is going to be about forty-six feet high, and it will have five levels. It will have three hundred and ninety-three stalls within it. And we will also have a hundred and thirteen surface spaces, for a total of five hundred and six parking spaces for Lifetime. Again, I had mentioned the outdoor pool deck, which is shown on this rendering with the two pools. And this area here, which I'm highlighting, that white, is the proposed slide that goes with, I'll call it the southwest corner of the pool deck. There'll be eleven total handicap spaces, seven at the surface, four in the garage for servicing Lifetime. And there's also proposed EVs. There's going to be twenty-one. There was a, one of the numbers on our plans for the EVs was incorrect. We had miscounted the EV requirement for Lifetime. So it's not sixty-two as it's shown on our plans, it's twenty-one. So those twenty-one will be fully within the garage, which the EVs represent four percent of the required parking. So the finished floor of this building is going to be about three ten, and the garage lower level is going to be about two ninety-seven. One of the things, one of the items I'd like to point out is that there are some small retaining walls to accommodate the site. There's an area located to the north of Lifetime that's really like an outdoor area. And that's, you can see there's a sidewalk connection going to it. And there's a small retaining wall that's got to run along there that's under four feet. There's another small retaining wall that runs around the pool deck just to keep it level. And there's a couple of small walls to create the entrance to get into the garage. But for the most part, the site is honoring the topography. There's no walls really along the perimeter. It was just to negotiate some of the topographic changes and maintain vehicular access. So from a zoning perspective, the bulk standards that are required for the Lifetime, it conforms to all the bulk standards required. What I mean by that, the setbacks, the height, the impervious coverage, don't need, I'm not going to go through each one of them, but the bulk table provide it. And I believe the planner agreed that the bulk standards all met what was outlined in the redevelopment plan. So that's really a summary, and I'm going to talk more about the landscaping as a whole once we get through the north side. Then the north side's a residential component of the site. Again, it's lot one point oh two, one point oh nine two, and it's about nine point seven acres. It's four stories and two hundred and eighty units. It has a hundred and forty-four one-bedroom, a hundred and eighteen two-bedrooms, and eighteen three-bedrooms totaling at two eighty. It has a parking garage that I'm going to highlight. The building encapsulates it basically on three sides. So the center area here, which you'll hear more testimony about, is a parking garage within the residential building. That parking garage has four hundred and sixty-two parking spaces. There's also six parking spaces at the front door. So let me describe that now that you have a little background. So when you're driving in from the main access road, which I'm highlighting on the east or the west?
Just a quick question, is there any access for non-vehicle people? Like if they're bus stop, things of that nature, that they're not driving a vehicle in? Like how would, how would if I didn't own a car, get in there?
For the residential?
Both.
Okay, well, there, for the residential, as you come around this turn right here, there is a drop-off that's right there. And the, also, there is a, there's a drop-off located right about midway through the building, that there's a slip that's outside the traffic.
Yeah, but what if I'm not being dropped off by like Uber? Like what if I'm actually physically walking? Because there's a tremendous amount of these buildings going back there, right? So obviously, we're probably going to see more and more pedestrians walking around back there. So if I'm a pedestrian, I don't, I'm in the low-income housing, I don't have a car, and I'm going to be walking in from wherever I'm getting a bus stop now, how am I getting in there without walking on what should be for vehicles only?
Well, so I, I don't think, is there any, there's no public transportation? Well, we'll, so, so we're going to address the issue of sidewalks. You know, in terms of public transportation connections to the site, that's a different issue. Sidewalks we'll get to, though.
Yes.
I mean, we just heard from one Sylvan Way, which is basically across the street. NJM is moving next door. Someone wants to run up to the gym at lunchtime. They don't want to drive their car over to Lifetime. Are they going to be able to walk there? Doesn't seem like they're going to be able to.
No, we're going to address sidewalks. It's coming.
The whole area? It's a big area.
It's coming.
Got a lot of buildings back there, too.
Right, right, no, understood. Sidewalks are coming. It's a topic that will be discussed.
Okay.
Okay, so continuing on the vehicular access, there is a drop, there's a loop that goes to the front of the main entrance to the residential, which I'm highlighting on the southeast corner of the building. There's the entrance of the garage, which winds up with the entrance, the road that runs in front of Lifetime Fitness. And then there is also a backup slip, because the trash of this building is inside the building. The parking, like I said, will be four hundred and sixty-eight total spaces. RSIS does require five thirty-three. With the EV bonus associated with the fifteen percent, the required is four eighty. So we are twelve parking stalls short. And you'll hear testimony of that, on that, from the traffic engineer.
Let me just say, the traffic engineer has empirical data, both from Avalon Bay and from Lifetime Fitness as to what they really need in terms of parking. And so the traffic consultant will provide that testimony in furtherance of those. In the one case, Avalon, which is slightly underparked from RSIS, you'll hear testimony as to why that's sufficient parking for them, based on empirical data. And with respect to Lifetime Fitness being overparked, you're going to hear testimony as to why they need to be overparked, okay? So that will be from the traffic engineer. Just wanted to highlight that issue.
So the EVs will be phased in as allowed and permitted over, you know, a third upfront, a third in three years, and a third in, within six years. There's nine ADA stalls, one on the site, eight in the garage. There's nine ADA stalls, one on the site, eight in the garage. There's two courtyards shown on this plan, that you'll hear more testimony from the landscape architect. And again, I mentioned the waste is all internal to the site, and there are some small retaining walls along the perimeter of the back of the site to try and prevent and maintain that limit of disturbance within the area that we committed to, which is the existing pavement.
When you say the back of the site, are you talking about the north?
North side of the site here has some small retaining walls that have to go in, they're three, four feet, just to stop us from disturbing wetlands and vegetation. So, to understand the whole thing here, is that we had two, we had two really things that we're dealing with, three. We have the floodplain and wetland issues that we have to deal with, DEP. We have stormwater we have to deal with, and we have the Highlands. All of them are, have competing interests to try and, you know, minimize the amount of impervious coverage that you can put on the site. The site has been designed to accomplish the stormwater management through what they call land cover management. So what we did is we reduced the vehicular pavement by, from six acres to 3.4, we reduced it by almost three full acres. So from a water quality perspective, we've improved it just by the fact that we've reduced three acres. The DEP's agreed with that. We also, the goal of the planting that you see, is to take the portions of the existing maintained lawns, and plant it, and create a more natural, I'll call it brush area, for lack of a better word. And what that does is, it allows natural infiltration of the site. It actually offsets by, the lawn runs off more versus the brush. So between that and managing the land cover management, we're able to meet what they call the hydrograph method, which basically states that you are not increasing the rate, the volume, or changing the timing of the runoff coming from your site. So, it's really the only way we could've done this site, because the Highlands precluded us from increasing the impervious more than 10,000 square feet. If we had to put a basin on the site, you would lose that same developable area as what you'd be dealing with. You would lose maybe a third of that developable area to accommodate a basin. We did some soil testing out there, and we had some varying results, so infiltration was not an option when it came to the DEP, because we couldn't meet their strict standards. So, really, the only way we could find to develop the site and stay within the existing limits of the, of the current development, was to really manage it through landscaping, and managing it by maintaining the timing. So, what, what does that all mean in layman's terms? We're planting, I mean, total almost 7,800 individual plants on site. That's how we changed the runoff coefficient of grass, and reduce it to a natural brush. You're talking about 244, 240 trees, 1,600 ornamental grasses, 2,100 shrubs, and 1,980 perennials. Now, let me explain to you one of the most important goals here, was not only stormwater management, it was also to try to create, my landscape architect, we have done these on four or five jobs now, the goal was to create a, he selected the plants that were native and non-invasive, and he tried to design it in such a way to provide like a seasonal lawn interest, so you would get color in spring, you would get, you know, you would get color in the fall, and you would also get evergreens in the winter. So, all of this area you see that's planted, is basically going to be somewhat natural looking. And it'd be maintained, obviously, but it's gotta be, it's gonna be natural looking in the sense that we've now taken that manicured lawn look, and we've gone to something more natural. And one of the benefits that we're showing here is that whole riparian buffer that was lawn is being planted, and it's gonna be planted, the whole north side of the stream was planted with these types of trees to refurbish and establish that riparian buffer to something that would improve the water quality. So, and by the way, those plant totals I gave you don't include the plantings associated with the foundation planting on the residential, that which will be covered by the other landscape architect.
Just so clear, 7,846 plants?
Yes.
In total?
So, those were required to try and slow down and promote infiltration, and do it, again, through land cover management. The nice thing is, there's no basin to maintain, there's no basin to fail, there's no basin to worry about clogging. This is all self-maintaining. Now, again, you do gotta go out there and make sure it doesn't become a weed fest, but you have, but, you know, that's something that the owners will look to do, because we've done three or four of these, they actually, because of the aesthetic value it gives and the colors, that, that's part of the incentive to make sure that is maintained properly. So, when we, we talked about circulation, we had met with the fire official, the fire subcode official.
Were you gonna discuss lighting and signage?
Yes. Let me get there. Oh, page stuck, I'm sorry.
Can I interrupt for a moment?
Sure.
You're looking through that. Mr. Lucino, can you help me out, understand something?
Sure.
Of course, you'll know this, maybe a little more. In a lot of these drawings, the ball fields are within the boundary line. Is this lot owned, the ball fields? Because my assumption was PTW owned those ball fields.
No, the, the ball fields...
I need on file here at Town Hall somewhere, that PTW owns all those fields in that entire area.
They don't. The ball fields are actually part of the subject property.
Okay.
But there's an easement that encumbers them, that protects them as ball fields. And they will remain as ball fields, nothing's gonna...
There's no way that can be changed. They wanna expand their building, they wanna do something.
There's no way that that can be changed, yeah, that's not gonna change. We'll stipulate to that, I mean, again, you can put that in there as a condition of approval.
You've got a line going for the outfield, like it's not even like you have ball field. So it's like, it's called a major's field. It goes like right through, like, basically right past first base, so there'll be a stipulation in place that those, those fields will never ever be touched.
We can certainly agree to that as a condition of approval, it's the case anyway, but we're happy to put belt and suspenders on.
It is a very odd-looking boundary line there, that they...
It is, but it is what it is, yeah, that's, that's owned by the applicant.
Okay. That's Du Berry. So now Du Berry actually owns those fields.
No, 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 Six Sylvan owns it, Du Berry's the engineer.
Sorry.
Six Sylvan owns the ball fields, but again, there's an easement.
Six Sylvan owns the ball fields, okay.
Yeah.
Easement for fields, not to be replaced.
Correct.
Sorry. Does, following up on that, if I may, does the subdivision cleave off the ball fields?
No, 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 the subdivision, we're just not disturbing what is existing there, which is, ownership is, it would be now Avalon Bay, because they will own that lot, but they will take ownership subject to the easement, which permits the ball fields and forbids Cancel or Avalon from doing anything to change that situation. We'll agree to that as a condition of approval as well, again, to put belt and suspenders on that. You may want your board attorney, I think I've supplied, but if not, I can supply you with a copy of the, of the title work, so that you can review that. Nobody's gonna come back and, with an application to endanger the ball fields at all. We understand those are sacred sites.
And those easements for the ball fields were already in place before you...
Yeah, they're long existing.
...purchased the property.
Correct, yeah, that's nothing new, those have been in place for a while. But yeah, Parsippany never owned, neither Little League nor the town owns that property, nor, nor did they ever.
Okay, well, Lake Parsippany Park, I guess that would be east of there, is owned by the town.
Yes.
Okay, that's, that's off the boundary line.
Yep.
And, and right, right field, okay. They own right field.
They may need to expand the parking lot.
I, I think so, I mean, it's all like, like 60 spots there for maybe a bit of that.
I know.
Okay, been there. All right, thank you for explaining.
I'm sorry, I skipped lighting, my page stuck. So, lighting, we were very, with the site lighting, we tried to be very conscientious. We, the maximum light pole height is 25, we kept them all to 16 feet. We also looked at, you know, around the perimeter, tried to keep it, you know, as low as possible with the foot candles. We have 57 light poles, all at 16 feet, there's 50 wall mounts at 16 feet, they're all LED downward shooting, you know, they're, they're, they're meant to minimize the spread in any kind of throw to the property line. That was a very strong intent on my, on our end, and that is talking about the lighting that goes around the perimeter, and also some bothered lighting that goes around the, the residential building. Signage, there are two monument signs proposed on the site, they're highlighted here. We're showing them, it's, the redevelopment plan envisions they could be as close as 10 feet to the curb. We do have to coordinate with JC P and L, because it is near easement, and if they don't want it in their easement, we're gonna have to push it back. Problem is, if we push it back, that easement's almost 21 feet from the curb. So now we're getting into environmental, so we have to talk to them. We had it marked out, there was not an electric line, at least in portions of that, so they may allow it, but again, it's subject to us asking them. There's also a number of directional signs. When you're coming in from the southeast corner, there's a directional sign here to indicate that Lifetime Fitness is to the left, if you go straight as you're going down to the north, there's a, there's a number of directional signs and delivery signs in that triangle area. And as you come up, there's another directional sign right before the left that go to Lifetime All the signs, we believe, comply. And the one thing that we're gonna have to deal with, though, is again, the monument sign in the front, if JC P and L wants us to push it back, then we're gonna be probably 20-plus feet away from the road, which is gonna have its own challenges, but we'll have to deal with that. Now to go back, we did have a meeting with your fire department before we jump onto circulation. We met with the code official, and I actually had a call with them today, and this is also in your packet. It's referred to Fire Lane Sketch for Coordination, it's really a markup of C115. So when we met with the fire department, they asked us for a couple of things, there was a letter that had, I would say, 10 or 15 things. Most of them were pretty straightforward, add fire striping, you know, move your hydrant, put your FDC connection, your knock box, all of that. But they did ask if we can extend fire lanes on either side of the building, from the subcode. So what we see here now is that we have a fire lane here and here that are going up, that's on the east side of the building, and on the west side of the building. On the west, on the east side of the building is gonna be 26 feet wide, and on the west side of the building is gonna be 20 feet, and that's because of the wetlands, and he felt that was adequate. That is gonna be constructed with grass pave, which is, but that is impervious when it comes to the Highlands in water quality. The DEP has agreed tentatively not to include it for water quali, for quantity, but I have to discharge it through a natural vegetated strip for them to do that. So these areas here add about another 9,000 square feet of impervious when it comes to the overall. So now we're no longer reducing, we're about even, or maybe a little more than existing, but still making the stormwater work, and still meeting the Highlands exemption, because we're, you're allowed to increase it up to 10,000 square feet. So, when you start looking at the impervious coverage on the site, you can start to see that, you know, where, we did provide some, we did provide sidewalks, we provided sidewalks to his, to the board members' comment, we have sidewalks located in the front of the residential building, around most of the back of the building, and the either side, and along the front, and along the north of Lifetime Building. Now, where we are with the exemption, and also where we are with the stormwater, pretty much on-site, every square foot of impervious we add, we have to debunk. That's really where we are, because if I add, it's almost, it's almost a two-to-one. Because I have to, for me to maintain, I can only offset so much with landscaping, I can only off, there's not enough maintained lawn planned. And you gotta remember, this drains in two different directions. Partially it drains to the back, and some of it drains to the front. So, when you, I'm gonna talk about the sidewalks in three pieces. On-site, if we put a sidewalk, we would have to remove impervious somewhere. That's literally where we are. Then when you look at the Sylvan Way, we do have an issue with the, I'm referring to This area being designated in the floodway is really problematic. And you have a portion of your driveway and into the road is in the floodway. Floodway is highly regulated, you can't even put a chain link fence, because it obstructs flow. You can't even put a, if you were to put a fence or a barrier, it has to be basically a split rail fence. So you can't raise the grade at all, you need a hardship waiver to do that. You can't add fill. So anywhere in that red line that you see there, especially here at the corner, is going to require a hardship waiver from the DEP, which is near impossible to get. So, because what we'd have to do is show, why do I need the hardship waiver? Why can't you do it another way? It's something called an alternative analysis. So when you go through this alternative analysis, they may turn around and says, well, you can put the sidewalk, you know, on the other side of Sylvan. Well, why do you need to put it here? There's no buffer on the other side of Sylvan. That's the little argument I'm gonna have with them. So, also, what I would, what I think really needs to be done, if you look at this photo here, photo number two, there's a large transformer located right at the corner of our north, our southeast corner. That transformer, I went out and measured it today, it's roughly five and a half feet from face of curb, the transformer. Now, I couldn't find JC P and L's requirement, but PSEG requires two foot from a transformer to a sidewalk. So, one of the things I started thinking about, and I was, you know, looking around the campus, you have areas that are, you have regulatory constraints, you have areas that have transformers. What really wants to happen here in the area wants to be like a pedestrian master plan, to figure out where these transformers are, like where are these regulatory areas, so you can build, you know, a comprehensive pedestrian access. Because to do, to do it piecemeal, and then have it go, you know, maybe to nowhere, and then maybe have a problem where you can't extend it, because even if we were able to build a sidewalk along Sylvan on our side, when you cross over the culvert, you have a transformer that you're gonna have to move. And, you know, that may, that's not that easy to do, when it comes to these switch gears and transformer. And they're not gonna let you pave a sidewalk more than likely right up against it, it's usually a couple feet they want between sidewalk or walking path and their equipment. So putting the sidewalk along Sylvan on our side is going to be very difficult with the floodway. It's just, very, very difficult. Accessing the site from the, is gonna be very difficult, because the culvert itself is in the floodway. I can't raise the grade in the culvert, I can't add a sidewalk to the culvert, can't even add a fall protection for a pedestrian on the culvert, because I would need a hardship. Now, all of that, maybe one of those would be doable, but all...
I have a question, though, so you, I mean, if you're talking about, and I don't disagree with you on a, an overall plan for sidewalks and pedestrian access, because that does need to happen with all the redevelopment that's going on back there. But even if you had, I guess, the starting point for access, like sidewalks that reached or came closer to the street, because right now you have nothing, like, there's no pedestrian access going all the way out.
If you think about it in three pieces, you have Sylvan, you have access to, from Sylvan to the site, and then you have the site. So, like we said, anything on the site, we're gonna have to reduce. So, maybe after we hear the traffic engineer, and we hear some other testimony, we can try to talk about what's, you know, what's the balance? Because that's just where we are. I mean, you know, so we have to figure out the sidewalks we've shown, where the sidewalks are priority, and I think we have to figure out what we can offset those sidewalks to accomplish what the board wants. The overall campus review, I think, is a really good idea, because I gotta be very honest with you, you can run these along the south side of Sylvan, then you're gonna go a little further, there's a transformer, two feet from the curb.
I would just have one more thing on that, was, could we put some type of condition that, for future, like when, when there is a discussion on pedestrian access, as more and more of these things begin to build, that that is something that can come into play in the future?
Well, I do, I do agree that some sort of master plan for...
Well, I do, I do agree that some sort of master plan for pedestrians is necessary. I also do not want the town to have to pay for it exactly.
Yeah. So, Mr. Chairman, anticipating that, I think, we understand and so we, we would be willing, the applicants would be willing to post an escrow or some of money with the town that would cover the cost of sidewalks that we can't feasibly put there on Sylvan because of the testimony that was provided. But that would be a start towards funding, a master plan-
We're gonna have all of these multifamily homes or apartments in this area, and if we're gonna continue to have desirable buildings for people to work in, they're gonna want a place to walk. I mean, it's just, you're gonna have, you may need some sort of transit other than Uber to these things now that you've got, what is it, three or four different apartment buildings, four apartment buildings all in this one complex. This is now a residential area to an extent.
Yeah, kids riding bikes, I mean, just, you could just generally-
Correct. So we, so we understand-
We do have to have some sort of plan. We have to, I'm not entirely sure, is this something we should be writing to the council and saying, we need to do this? And then they should be talking to the whole complex there?
Well, in, in this redevelopment plan, it did mention sidewalks, correct?
It did. So our view is that we just, we have a hardship in terms of feasibility of a sidewalk along the floodway, when the transformer, et cetera. We understand the desire for sidewalks in this area as the area redevelops, and we support that. We would be willing to, to put money up to help fund those improvements for our pro-rata share of that. We work with Mr. Canziano to come up with a, with a, with a number to do that with the expectation that as other developers come in to redevelop, that they would be doing the same thing. And as the town, if the town, as the town, as the case may be, develops a pedestrian network of master plan, that there would be funding in there from the developers to pay for it, rather than the taxpayers.
I mean, I look at this and I say, okay, is the school bus gonna come back in there to the building? Probably gonna have to, because there is no other place to leave them off. But people are gonna wanna walk to whatever, whether it's other buildings. I'm sure some sort of retail's gonna start showing up, perhaps within walking distance, even if it's just Wendy's.
The Wegmans is just over a mile from the site, Wegmans supermarket. You've got Seasons 52 within a mile, Cat Book Grill within a mile. You've got Tommy's Tavern within a mile of here.
Fifteen fifteen development?
Yeah.
All that stuff there?
So you're, you're gonna have to have, I mean, the temptation for people to walk.
Of course.
Even, even if there are no sidewalks, people are gonna walk.
Right. But like I said, we're willing to put up the escrow. We just, our view is, as you've heard, that we-
I agree, I agree with you that a master plan for the entire area has to be done. Something has to be worked out among the group.
And we put up money for our share of the cost to that. It's just the sidewalk on our site there is not where it's feasible. It is across the street, but as was testified to, there's gonna be other places on Sylvan where it's not gonna be feasible on that side of the street. So that's the need for the master plan, is trying to figure that out.
Now, this is my thirty-fourth year on a land utility board in this town, and we've, I've never been a party to doing one of these things before. So I'd really kinda like to know what the proper approach for starting the ball rolling on this, rather than just saying, sure, you gotta do this, and we're gonna put in an escrow, and then nothing happens until somebody gets hurt.
Well, it, it, from our perspective, it would be, we'd have a developer's agreement, which would make certain requirement of the conditions of approval. And if the board wants to recommend a master plan, pedestrian master plan for the area to the council, we could certainly do that. And that would make, that would seem to make a lot of sense. And like I said, we would be happy to post a sum that would be, represent our pro-rata share towards those costs. And the theory being that if you did that with each developer as they came forward, you would have money in place or recoup money if the town wanted to be proactive about doing the plan and fronting the money and then recouping it, whatever. Those are policy decisions for the municipality, but that might be a suggested way to move forward on it.
Well, and I think that while the applicant before us tonight is being very generous in terms of offering up the escrow, it may be more appropriate to put an ordinance in place requiring a sidewalk fee to fund this master plan in case we have applicants who aren't as generous.
Or you can condition approvals on that, but that, those are-
Yeah, so outside of this application, the board can consider contacting council, saying, making this recommendation based on this concept that the applicants put forward.
I think we have to. I think, I think we're well past the need for this, as Mr. Meth and others have pointed out.
Chairman, I definitely agree with that. Something, I was just jotting things down. I know there was, we have either one and two campuses or one and four. I think the number seven campus is new, says at the end, the drive-in way. We have the fifty-five and older on Littleton Road across the street where the light is. Three new buildings on Century Drive, which is right by the FedEx building, past those three. And we have fifteen fifteen, which is probably within half a mile walking distance, so.
Half a mile.
We gotta maybe write to all the, all the owners of all those properties and all come together, something. But that's like a thousand people, almost a thousand units, so.
We're definitely gonna, we're definitely gonna have to recommend something to the, to the-
I think even the other built, just here before, one Sylvan somehow connects to three and five, and I think they have like rent-a-bikes on their property also. I think it's called the Arbers. Oh, that's, that's, the Arbers is, that's called? And you could like rent a bike and ride their campus, so, within their campus.
Well, I think we should accept suggestions from the board and from our professionals and from the applicants as to the best way to go about this. I think the ball should get rolling on it.
Yeah, great. So, Mr. Ranelli, getting back to access from the property to Sylvan by sidewalk, aren't you required by ADA to provide an accessible route to a public way?
If there's a sidewalk out there, yes.
Aren't you required by ADA to provide access to a public way, an accessible route? I believe you are, if you look it up.
I think there needs to be a sidewalk there. You're not gonna-
I think that, my understanding is, is that you need to have a public access to, you're not gonna bring them, just discharge them into the street. So I think if there is a sidewalk, you should make a public connection. That's how I-
I will bring the ADA regulation to the next meeting and show you where it says this.
Well, I thought, I mean, I, because the way I've seen it, interpret it, and that's fine, is the way I understand it, is that if you have a sidewalk, you're supposed to make a connection. Because if you don't have a sidewalk, there's no connection.
You mean the sidewalk that we've all told you we want, you will provide?
No, I can't, no, I can't provide it.
Well, I just wanted to add to that. You've talked a lot about, I guess that's the Easterly entrance where photo two is, where it is restricted by floodway. And just for the board, if you could repeat where you are in the DEP application, you're inches away from getting your approval. However, we have this sidewalk discussion going on.
Yes.
And it's entirely up to DEP's rules, you have another individual permit, you won't qualify for general permits for a sidewalk in a floodway. You bring up the transformer issue, again, that there may be some relief, maybe able to get it between there. But on the west side, photograph one area or the access in four to one is unregulated. You're outside of the floodway and you're outside of the floodplain on Sylvan. So let's not just blaze over that you have, yeah, right there and along the frontage of the, you know, along the right of way of Sylvan. So you do have access, you do have unregulated areas.
The floodway still crosses the culvert?
True, true. But you have a thirty-foot wide existing culvert-
Yes.
And a, and a six or eight inch high curb along that culvert. So, you know, constructing a curb or some other means of separating without obstructing floodwater, of separating pedestrians on that existing culvert from, let's assume it's a twenty-four foot wide travel way for cars and a six-foot travel way for pedestrian going over that existing culvert. I mean, my point is, we can't say for sure if the DEP will allow it or not allow it at this time. Tonight's meeting, there's, there's no way to know what options you have to do.
Let me understand what you just said, though. You're saying to, there's a thirty-foot wide road, right?
Correct.
Convert part of that road into a sidewalk, but I can't raise it, so it'll be accurate.
No, it's, it's obstructed already. There's an eight-inch curb there. It's already, obstruction of flow is already-
But you're still following the floodway.
Yeah, but you're not obstructing the flow. And again, it goes back-
But you gotta, still gotta go for a hardship for it, and that's gonna be-
Not necessarily. But it does go back, and I, I do wanna make it clear, this is totally within the jurisdiction of the DEP, that you don't know the answer and I don't know the answer, how it will be received. But they do want complete streets and they do want a public sidewalk to be installed. So there are provisions for that. But the question is, how do you go about that as a condition of approval if you're ninety-nine percent, you're, you're just about ready to get your DEP permit, you had mentioned any day now?
End of the month, we expect.
End of the month. There are provisions to go in for modifications for permits.
Well, we're gonna have to go for modification no matter what. So the fire lanes came up, you know, so I'm going back, okay?
Well, that's good. That's good for this discussion.
Well, it's good, I mean, because all these changes you see, I'm going back because if, if I introduce that now, they'll make me withdraw it.
And it goes back, you stated earlier, it would be a discussion on impervious coverage, how much, where you can take from, where you wanna add to.
Right. So when we do these changes, and there'll be more changes, obviously, so when we, as the board tweaks this plan, we would go back as a one, we would go back one time to the DEP.
So I just wanna make it clear to the board, it's not that you can't do it because of DEP. It's unknown at this point if we can do sidewalk going into the property or if we can do sidewalk on Sylvan.
Well, let me just add, because what you've mentioned was an idea we came up with, right? And one of the things I ran into is that you still need to put fall protection on that.
No, it's, the fall protection's already there. It's on, it's on the-
No, it's not. Those are two split rails. That does not meet the guidelines of fall protection. You need a four-inch spindle, and I can't put that in because it obstructs flow. So we can talk about it, I challenge this. I mean, if I put spindles in, I have to raise it up above the floodway, so there are-
And how far are you into the floodway there? I mean, these are discussions, our friends at the DEP will absolutely be all over.
Right. Now, the other thing is-
We don't know the answer to that tonight.
Correct. And the other thing I just wanna mention, yeah, we do have some area here, but as you start going up, and that's why the master plan's really important, you may be able to fit a sidewalk here, like I'm pointing in the north, the southwest corner, as you start going up Sylvan, you're back into the floodway. So that's why the master plan, I think, is really important, because you may be able to get out here, maybe you cross the street and then you go, and it's, it's, I real-
And I wanna add, the, installing the sidewalk and paying escrow to construct a sidewalk is the easy part. Getting it permitted from the state is gonna be the hard part.
So let me, on that point, Mr. Ranelli, let me ask you a question. If the township, talk about the degree or probability of obtaining a permit from the DEP, if the township is the applicant for the permit as opposed to this applicant being the applicant for the permit.
It's been my experience that DEP reacts and entertains more creative ways of doing things from a township than they do from a private developer. It's just the reality. You're shaking your head because it's just the reality.
It's true. There's some vehicle that we can do at this application funds the discussion under a town application.
Would you be willing to work with the township if that became the next step?
Sure.
The property owner would work with the township to have easements for sidewalks and work with the township to prepare that application?
Absolutely. Our, our view is, again, as testified to, and I don't wanna put words in your mouth, but let me ask you, nil to none?
Nil to none.
Of a hardship variant?
If I was going for all of these little hardships, I would have a nil to none chance of getting it.
So, but you believe that the township would have a better chance, much better chance?
Because I think they would roll it into just more than this project. They would roll it in and they would, they would try to be comprehensive.
So we wanna create options here. If, if the township believes as part of its master plan that it can get, it can achieve permitting for a sidewalk on our part of Sylvan, that's fine with us. We'll, we'll post the money, we'll assist, we'll do whatever we need to do to be cooperative with that endeavor. If the township believes that pursuant to a master plan, that in this area of Sylvan, that a sidewalk is better on the other side of the street because of the floodway issues and the transformer and everything else, you know, that's fine too. We're happy to, to pay and contribute financially, but what would kill the project is, is having to seek to achieve a hardship waiver from the DEP, that would kill the project. And I remind the board too, that the, the cancel part of this with the two-hundred-and-eighty units is a replacement round three project for the project out there on Route forty-six that never got built. So there's a imperative, seems to me, from an affordable housing perspective, for the township to remain in good standing and compliance with its affordable housing obligations here. But again, we wanna be cooperative and we wanna, you know, work through this with you in terms of the best way to proceed to achieve the, the goal of pedestrian access and connectivity that the board is seeking.
I just had a question. So DEP won't let you change the driveway on, that goes across the culverts at all?
It's in the floodway, so you can't raise it. If you're replacing it in kind because it's damaged, yes. But once you make it longer, higher, you have to make sure you're not impacting downstream or you're blocking water. It's, it's very difficult. If you're, they usually want you to replace it in kind. You know what I mean? It's been there, you know, whatever it's been doing, it's doing. But to actually raise it, now, we can get creative too, you know, but going for a hardship waiver would be a problem unless there's no other way of accomplishing what you're trying to do. So that's the key to a hardship waiver.
Which is not gonna happen here. I mean, I've been through this process before. A hardship waiver is at least a year and it would kill this, it would kill this development.
There's no timeframe associated with it.
I'm gonna ask our professionals and also because he's so knowledgeable, our applicant's attorney here, what are the best steps to start the process, the ball rolling here towards getting the council to consider a master plan for pedestrian traffic in this particular piece of property?
You're asking me?
I'm, I'm actually asking Andrew or Stuart.
I don't know about the master plan part, and that, you know, Mr. Lucino may have some insight on that, but as far as the sidewalk on the property and the access across the culverts existing or reconstructed, that should be part of a condition of your modification. Now, if you, if they say no, absolutely, and, and you do a good faith effort and you can document that you had the pre-application meeting or, or the discussions with them, but, because it's two, it's two different arguments. It's a master plan on Sylvan, and then there's access, private access to Sylvan. So the modification discussion should be with DEP on sidewalk, at least one point of access from the site to Sylvan.
Understood. So onsite, we'll be just making the drainage work, like onsite. That's what it's gonna be. We're gonna have to make the drainage work.
And you talked about modify, possible modifications to, to the culvert.
So, no, no. I say we're not gonna modify the culvert.
No, I'm saying you should, you should have a good faith discussion with the DEP when you go back and-
Oh, okay. I see what you're saying. Gotcha.
When did you submit the DEP application?
We just got a thirty-day extension to June thirtieth, so that would make it, you know, three months before June first roughly.
So it was after the redevelopment plan on the property was adopted and put into place, which required the sidewalks, but you didn't present the sidewalk option to DEP?
No, we did not, because I knew it would be a problem crossing the culvert, that's why we-
Even though that was a requirement of the redevelopment plan?
That is correct.
Nice. I have just a quick clarification, Mr. Stanley or Mr. Chairman, maybe help me out. And Mr. Lucino probably a good point. The, this is a package deal, right? We're approving the fitness center, the garage, and the, and the apartments, not just the apartments, even though it's being subdivided, is that right?
We are approving all of them.
We are approving all of them.
Oh, it's all of them?
That's part of the whole application, yeah.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Chairman, to answer your question from the master plan side of it, I think you need to define the area where you want the study to address, whether it's Sylvan, whether it's more than Sylvan, whether it's a portion of Sylvan. And then you make a recommendation to the governing body that they commission the pedestrian, I don't even know what you want to call it, but the pedestrian master plan for the area that you defined.
Well, I think we have to cover all the areas that now will have residential properties. I think that's a start. Now, whether it would also include some of the other industrial and office buildings. But certainly, we have with these four projects, plus another one, plus two others that are across the street. So in the immediate area, what, we have six big apartment complexes that are suddenly going up. Pedestrian access, I think, is essential to consider. And so we have to, that whole segment of town has to be looked at, at least.
In some respects, the master plan already covers it. Our master plan defines the entire grid of Sylvan and campus and Dryden as a high priority for sidewalks.
Okay.
It does already, within the sidewalk section of the last master plan.
Yeah, but then it doesn't really put a plan to it.
Correct. What we need to do is, to get the governing body moving, we need them to come up with an ordinance and a plan and some other kind of drawing to move forward.
So we should send them a note recommending that they consider an ordinance?
Yes.
That defines a pedestrian master plan for this segment of the town.
Whether it's an ordinance or a resolution or, you know, some mechanism?
Some mechanism, yes.
Regardless, for this application, there still is an issue about, even if you're not putting sidewalk on the frontage, how are pedestrians going to connect to a possible sidewalk across the street?
We're going to get together with your engineer, and we'll talk about some of these options. Like we said, we're not messing with the DEP permit now. And we'll talk about what some options are, you know, and figure it out. And then we'll go present our best options to the DEP after the DEP issues the permit, please.
I think they could.
Because...
I understand. And you anticipate that permit in the next 30 days, 20 days?
June 30. So let's, once we do that, we'll come up with some ideas. We might have to get a little creative, and let's see what they come back with. Because we're not talking about a sidewalk along Sylvan now, and now you're talking about just the access.
The access from this site to Sylvan.
Okay. So we can, you know, now you're talking about one thing and not two. So it may be just a, you know, we'll definitely, the DEP will tell us straight up if they're going to entertain it or not. I mean, Dennis Kontois is very straightforward.
Mr. Inglisino, just to say, we're now past 10 o'clock. We're not through with this witness at this time.
Understood. If we could finish his affirmative testimony, how much more...
Not much.
...does he have?
I'm fine with that.
Okay. I don't know how much public is here, but if we could finish with Mr. Inelli tonight with questions, that would be fabulous. There's been a lot of questions already. I don't know whether there's any more, but while it's fresh in the board's mind...
I can certainly ask, but he may have to be responding to questions again next time.
Understood. So just picking up, we've gone through, I guess, just to close, you know, we're going to revisit the sidewalks after we hear some traffic testimony on the interior. Moving on to utilities, all the utilities will be continued to service through Sylvan. Most of the utilities are going to have to be jacking board. What that means, they're going to have to go under the culvert or under the stream. It's already shown on as part of our DEP permit to ask to do that. There's no way to get the utilities out, same problem. The water is going to be a loop around that main loop, what I was talking about before. There's going to be a new water line that's going to come in, and it's going to connect, and it's going to create another loop all the way around. So there's going to be an eight-inch connecting to the 12-inch. Fire department asks us to add another loop around this building with hydrants at the end of each fire lane with bollards to provide fire operating capability. All the communications, all the electric, we still have to work with JC P&amp;L, trying to figure out what they have coming into the site. You know, one of the hard parts is the conduits are going underneath the culvert, so they may have spares that we don't know about. So we're trying to work all of that out.
With regard to outside agency approval, Mr. Inelli, I indicated that Morse County Planning Board has been submitted and is pending, correct?
Yes.
Morse County Soil Conservation District has also submitted and pending, correct?
Yes.
And you discussed the DEP permits that are pending, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, there's two other permits. There'll be the TWA for treatment works for sewer and BWSE for water.
Those are post-approved, correct?
Those are post-approved.
And then, so in your opinion, you've kind of addressed the key points of the professional letters that relate to your testimonies, is that correct?
I tried to pick up what I thought was...
Is that correct?
Yes. Tried to pick up...
Okay, Mr. Chairman, then if I could turn it back to the board for questions of the witness. I'm trying to be mindful of the hour, and we're trying to make progress here. I'm going to start again with our engineer, since this is the engineer.
Well, we have many, many comments on the letter, but most of it is housekeeping, which I understand that the applicant will agree with addressing the vast majority of the comments. I guess we should start with, is there any comment that you don't agree with?
No. Most of them are housekeeping, for the most part. I touched on the ones that were requiring testimony, but everything else was mainly housekeeping.
Just a little bit more, the area of the pool and the life fitness, we noticed there wasn't a lot of detail there. It's not, the detail's not there. I asked you to provide it in test. I don't know if I missed it. What's going on with the pool area and, you know, is, is that being constructed now? It says to be designed by others, area proposable.
So you will hear testimony, one from the Lifetime representative, and they will explain the operations. Right now, what we showed there is the impervious coverage, how it's draining, like how the infrastructure is going to work. But you'll hear testimony from Lifetime on the actual operations and programming that will be occurring on the pool deck.
Did you provide testimony on the subdivision, comment 13, about that, just for the board's knowledge, that the northernly lot does not have frontage, and you need a variance for a lot not having frontage? Did you get any testimony on that?
Yeah, I tried to explain that at the beginning of the meeting. There's an easement, it's actually more than an easement. We have the form, we'll supply it to board council for review and approval that will establish access to the public street of Sylvan Way.
And just a minor comment, just a modification of that easement, just comment 14, just to square off that easement. Trying to see what else of major items. Again, the traffic, we'll talk about the parking, the under, you know, below RSIS for the residential, and the above the required number of stalls for the non-residential use. Because there's an opportunity, it looks like a glaring opportunity to pick up some, to reduce some impervious area. You have 113 or so surface parking spaces that, you know, five or 10 parking spaces out of the 113 covers the increased impervious area on Sylvan, for example, or could do the same for the sidewalk inside the site. So it's a big issue about the imperviousness and the number of parking spaces.
Yes. You'll hear from the traffic. We've been working together with the applicants to provide data.
Yeah. But that could really help this situation about the parking space.
Agreed.
I think that's, if I have other quick comments, will you be back next?
Yes.
Yeah. That's all I have right now.
Tom, can I interject one question?
All right.
Okay.
Are you going to...
I was going to go to Stuart. You know, Mr. Chairman, given the hour and Mr. Meth's topic is a bit to ask another question, we have a couple of small issues that came up during the testimony tonight. We can defer them to next time.
Okay. Good.
The question's simple. It's in the residential garage. Are the spaces going to be assigned?
My understanding, they are not assigned.
Okay. So they're open to anybody?
But that'll be, we'll get you an answer to that question.
Understood. Thank you.
Fair enough. Other members of the board have questions on this witness, on this testimony, and he's going to be coming back. So hearing and seeing none. Other members of the public who have questions of this witness, if you please come forward, identify yourself and your address, and ask your question.
Hi, Allison Cogan, For Faber Road. I just wanted to confirm that there's no access for the residents of the building to get to the public park that's right behind it, because it sounds like there's going to be now walls behind the residents between the walls and the forest that leads to the public park.
There will be no residential connection or connection to the park from the residential building. There'll be no connection.
Any other members of the public who have questions on this witness?
Even though technically you're the owner of that, you're going to restrict access?
No, we're not making a formal connection.
I'm just saying, there are connections there now. So are you going to block them off somehow?
No, we're just not, we're just not going to...
Okay.
No, the walls are small walls that are in certain locations. It's not the whole building.
We're going to have residents say, well, we own this property. We're allowed to use it. So we can just walk through here.
The residents will be renters, first of all.
No, they're renting from the owners who own that property.
Right. But we're just, we're not planning on making any change whatsoever to what's there in the woods.
All right. Any other members of the public have any questions? Hearing and seeing none. Counselor Nora, when do we have time?
June 17.
June 17.
We'll be back. Do we have the whole night?
[laughing]
Got to ask these questions.
Depends on what you do next week.
She's the one who's in control.
I know. That's why I'm asking Nora.
All right. So do I have a motion to...
Motion to carry?
To carry to the 17th, yes.
And just so the record's clear, that's with no further notice to the public. This is the notice to the public to carry to June 17th at 7:30 PM here in...
Right. Do you understand that, everybody from the public? This is it. This is your notice. All right. I've got, who moved the motion?
I did.
Okay. And who seconded it?
I did. Seconded. There we go.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right. Before we go, we had a discussion here about suggesting to the council that they come up with something for the master plan for the pedestrians in this vicinity.
Mr. Chairman, can we, does it have to be a public forum where we can discuss this? Can we exchange emails with ideas, or has it been done? We do not exchange emails on that.
Yeah, you don't. You don't do that.
And this is an application. This is to talk to the town council, isn't it?
Yeah, to the council. So I'll prepare a draft letter with the recommendation to the council. I'll have it sent, I'll send it to Nora to circulate to the board. Don't reply all. You can send your comments to me, and then we'll finalize it at the next meeting, at the 17th, not the 10th.
Thank you. Very good. All right. So a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Anybody opposed?